Okay, thank you for your patience. We were just trying to take care of some technical difficulties. Welcome to the governing body meeting of January 14th. I call this meeting to order. If you will all rise for the invocation, give your attention to Councilwoman Hofer. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Our invocation speaker tonight is Reverend Jeff Klinger. He is the Director of the Congregational Excellence and Connectional Ministries for the Great Plains Conference of the United Methodist Church. Prior to beginning in that role in 2022, he spent seven years as the lead pastor at Topeka First United Methodist Church. Though he and his family now worship at Cafe...
Ketzel?
Ketzel. On Sunday mornings, they remain connected to First through youth programming. Jeff is married to Heather, and they have two children, one a sophomore at Topeka High and the other a seventh grader at Landon Middle School and College Prep Academy. Jeff and his family are glad to live in Topeka and to be investing in the community through churches and schools alike. Jeff is also serving as a volunteer chaplain with the Topeka Fire Department.
Let's pray together. Dear God, there was just so much snow. And then it snowed again, and the kids kept not going back to school, and small businesses lost another day of sales again and again, and many lost time from work, and now the temperatures are supposed to turn bitter cold. Sometimes it feels like so much. And then on Monday, we're going to celebrate the life and the legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and inaugurate the next President of the United States. And some feel like this will make America great again, and some feel like this poses a very real threat to their well-being. Sometimes it feels like so much. Yet there were blue skies today, and the sun shone brightly, and we could feel a warmth that was not of our own making, but that came as a gift from you. And so we remember your command to be not afraid. We remember your promise to be with us always to the end of the age, and we remember your call to love you with everything we are and have, and to love our neighbors as ourselves, all of our neighbors, even them. And so in those times when it feels like so much, we pause, and we turn to you, and we offer ourselves and this time to you. And so here we are, all present this evening with a common desire to serve the city of Topeka, all with the sense that we have gifts and a call and a responsibility to show up and to use our voice in partnership with you and support of one another, our brothers and sisters. Bless us, oh God. Bless this meeting and deliberations and all our neighbors. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. If I may ask everyone assembled today, and not to take away from the invocation, sir, to recognize for a moment of silence for all those who are suffering in the fires in California, for those who are still trying to recover from the devastation south and all of the rains that we're having, and give some thought to how fortunate we are to be able to assemble here today and keep them in our thoughts. Just a moment, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Alcala.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kettle.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have 10 present.
Next on the agenda is an item that we do in order to recognize the service of a governing body member in the capacity of deputy mayor. So I'd like to ask current deputy mayor Valdivia Alcala if you'll join me up front, please. She'll like I'm on The Price is Right with this kind of a microphone. I think I'll just pass and just be real loud, okay? Christine, it's been a practice since I took office to recognize those governing body members who have served in the capacity of deputy mayor. They take on additional duties. They take on requests that are just a little bit more than the regular duties of a governing body member. So it's important that we recognize that effort and make sure that we appreciate the time that they've taken to serve in that capacity. Each year I've awarded and presented very unique presentations designed by local artists, and this time is no exception.
I'm not the artist.
Councilwoman Ortiz is not the artist. I would like to recognize two people as I present this to deputy mayor, and that is my executive assistant Jane Murray and the artist herself, Lisa Baker. If you both could stand, please. Thank you very much. One of these ladies talked and visited with me about what would be an appropriate recognition. We took note in the past, Deputy Mayor, of your comments with regard to indigenous peoples. And so with recognition, this is an artist conceptual rendering of the city flag, and this is the only one that I know of in this kind of capacity. And Lisa Baker is a very talented artist, a member of the tribe, and we noticed that she used to make these amazing woven baskets. We thought about that as probably something to provide, but we incorporated it, we, they did, into this, and I want to reveal it to you. This presented to Christina Valdivia Alcala, Deputy Mayor, January 2024 to January 2025. In appreciation for dedicated service with gratitude, Mayor Padilla, but I give it to them per on behalf of the entire governing body. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you.
As you can see, what it is, it's her rendition of the city flag in a woven capacity with even the flag and that star that it represents. So it's a very unique piece.
Just thank you for this, Lisa. This is absolutely beautiful, and you and I have had discussions, and you know that my heart is always with the indigenous communities across the globe. So for our own indigenous communities on this side of the border, my relatives of indigenous communities on the Mexico side of the border, Jane, you know you've got some indigenous blood running through your veins, too. So just thank you so much. This is extraordinary. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. I do have a mayoral proclamation to read before we get into the next item on the agenda for presentations. So if I could ask Chris Hamilton to join me up here, please. Chris, thanks for joining me.
You're welcome. Thank you, Reverend.
Mr. Hamilton will be, I guess, the official recipient once I read this proclamation, and then I'm going to ask him to invite his friends that have come here. If you can come up here right now, after I read the proclamation, he will introduce you to the crowd. So if you can invite your friends up now.
Please go.
Come on up here. Jeff, I call you up. Jewel, Chris, that's your rabbi, Reverend Tori, Reverend Robert Ortiz, Lee Christensen, Nick Zytis. Okay. A proclamation by the mayor. Whereas January 16, 2025, is recognized as National Religious Freedom Day, a day to celebrate and reaffirm the fundamental right of religious freedom for all citizens. And whereas religion has its greatest impact not on the national level but at the local level, where people of faith live by their convictions and serve and bless others on a one-on-one basis, fostering a sense of community and mutual support. And whereas religion believes our community by providing a moral compass, fostering love and offering strength during loss. For decades, the religious institutions and people of faith have played a crucial role in our city through charitable activities, aiding the needy, comforting those in loss, and encouraging us to high standards of integrity. And whereas the United States Constitution and the Kansas Constitution affirm the right of all citizens to freely exercise their religious faith or nonreligious beliefs in the public square without being deprived of other rights or privileges. And whereas we all benefit from a pluralistic society where residents of all beliefs work together for the common good while holding divergent viewpoints, and where all citizens are free to exercise such influence as their ideas and values may engender. And whereas Topeka welcomes and protects people of diverse backgrounds by allowing them to freely live according to their deeply held conviction as protected by law. And whereas Topeka encourages all residents to strive to understand the experiences and concerns of others while supporting the essential role religion plays in protecting human dignity, strengthening society, and fostering a culture of tolerance and peace. Now therefore, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim January 16, 2025, as National Religious Freedom Day, and witness whereof, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, to hereby affix my official signature and the official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on the day of 14, January 2025. Congratulations.
First, I'd like to speak on behalf as President of Interfaith at Topeka. Interfaith comprises more than 20 different religious communities in the city. It's been around since 1979, or an educational community that sponsors Thanksgiving services and other educational events. I'd like to welcome members of faith communities tonight representing our diversity, because it has a very diverse religious community. First, we have Tori Lightcap with Grace Cathedral. And Robert Ortiz.
Piquan Bob Ortiz with Latter Day Parish.
And Lee Christensen.
With the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints.
And Jill Mac.
Macda, Islamic Center of Topeka.
And Nick. And Nick.
I'm Nick Exodus. I'm the Religious Freedom Coordinator for the State of Kansas for the Church of Jesus Christ.
Well, thank you very much, Jeff. I'm glad that you pointed out the diversity of the religious groups and organizations that we have in Topeka, and I appreciate all that you do for the communities. Thank you again for being here with us, and this is for you. And if you want additional copies for the members, just let my office know, and we can make the call.
Well.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, sir, for being here.
We'll take a bunch of photos really quickly. Hold up the proclamation.
Yeah. There you go.
There you go. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
The first one is the 2025 Minority Women and Disadvantaged Business Enterprises Utilization Goal Recommendation.
Mr. State Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Leah Volin, our Deputy Director of Procurement and Grants Management, Louis Matos, Procurement Manager, will walk us through this item. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the governing body. Thank you, Dr. Perez. Appreciate you for that introduction. We jumped the gun a little earlier. We were really excited to be up here tonight before you all. As Dr. Perez mentioned, my name is Luis Matos. I am the Procurement Manager for the City of Topeka, and I also serve as the Program Review Committee Liaison. And tonight I have the distinct pleasure of presenting on the 2025 Annual Minority Women and Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Utilization Goal. Tonight, on tonight's presentation agenda, I'll be providing a brief code overview of the results of the 2024 utilization goal, the recommended 2025 utilization goal, and some additional actions that will take place this year to ensure that we achieve that The Program Review Committee is outlined under the Topeka Municipal Code, and the committee is comprised of city staff, including myself, the Division Director of Procurement and Grants Management, Leah, the Director of HR, the Director of Public Works, and anyone else the city manager assigns to the committee. We are responsible for creating and reporting on goals for the utilization and participation of minority women and disadvantaged business enterprise and city contracts. Our responsibilities include presenting annual goals to the city manager for the utilization of MWDBE businesses, reviewing and analyzing on a quarterly basis current utilization to achieve those goals, and reporting to the governing body on a quarterly basis through the city manager the utilization of MWDBE businesses, which is published in each quarterly financial report. In 2024, the utilization goal was set at 40%. The city had issued 174 bids to the public at the time that the memo that's provided in your packet was drafted. The city received diverse vendor participation on 131 of those bids. From those 131 bids, the city awarded 51 contracts to diverse vendors totaling 38.93% MWDBE utilization. In 2025, the committee recommends maintaining the 40% MWDBE utilization goal, and the Program Review Committee created this goal in consideration of utilization of previous years, the current market environment, economic indicators, and amplified engagement with the diverse business community, building on 2024's momentum and collaboration with value partners. Some actions that we're going to take in 2025 include highlighting success stories of awarded projects to the diverse businesses while promoting educational resources on the city's procurement process and how to become a registered vendor, actively participating in community partner workshops, scheduling bilingual sessions on city vendor registration and bid processes, collaborating with the Greater Topeka Partnership to host quarterly workshops, and engage in GoToPeka-led roundtable on events. Lastly, building on the success of the National League of Cities City Inclusive Entrepreneurship Program and the 2024 Anchor Procurement Initiative, I am very happy to announce the city will be hosting a 2025 Supplier Diversity Expo with support from sponsorships by anchor institutions. Before I do open the floor to any questions any of you may have, I do want to mention, I had noticed, well, I had mentioned earlier, that the memo that is in your packets was drafted in November, December of 2024. Prior to tonight's meeting, I did run some additional numbers as we closed out 2024 and gathered some data, and we actually did finish the year at 43% MWDBE utilization. At the end of November, we had quite a few bids that were released, and we were able to get awarded before the end of the year. That being said, I stand for any questions.
Questions? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Not so much questions, but a comment. Let's see, it's almost, I think it's five years since I've been on council, and Leia, I just want to say from the time getting on council until now, there has been what really feels like a lot of change and movement forward. So I just want to say good job to both of you, because I think that finally, and this was way before you, you know, there needed to be that understanding of the actual diverse community that we have, and for that to play out in the numbers that we're looking at. So just good job, both of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two questions, and they may sound like hard questions, but they're not intended to be challenges. When you set your 40% goal, was that originally set to be 40% of all bids left rather than only ones that had a diverse diversity in the bidders?
Yeah, so with the Program Review Committee, we created a regulation document of processes and procedures that we follow, and so how we calculate that percentage is only based off of how many bids we actually receive diverse vendor participation on.
So if I could add that it's twofold, really. We want to see an increase in participation, which would hopefully result in an increase of awarded contracts. But it's really about the education process behind the goals and getting them to understand, getting the community to understand our bidding processes and how to do and offer goods and services to the city. So we're trying to increase the participation numbers, which will hopefully result in higher contract award numbers.
And I really appreciate that. The second question was, of those bids that you've had out, and I don't know the sizes of these when you're talking about just how many bids, but were there, to your knowledge, diverse minority slash diverse bidders out there that could have bid, or are those areas that were specific enough perhaps that went on?
So we could certainly look into that in more detail. What I can say is that we're actively engaging with all various types of vendors and getting them to register in the portal and sending out notices. We're publishing our bids in the city manager's weekly newsletter. We're spreading the word with our community partners and businesses that help promote doing business with the city. And so of those bids, there are specialty bids that go out that are qualification-based that might require services from very specialized industries. As far as construction bids and more of the labor technical side of the bid process, that's where we're really seeing a lot of movement and engagement with those companies. So I don't know if that exactly answers your question. I'm not sure how we could determine the specifics on what vendors are out there other than working with our partners. This year, we were able to write a reference letter for IBSA to partner with GoToPeka and develop an online diverse business and small business directory, which we have a link to, and we share with our internal city staff. We use it. It has businesses in the city. It has businesses in the area that have registered with IBSA to be featured on that website so that we can see what categories of companies are available to us when we need them. So we're trying.
Thank you. It sounds like you're very affirmatively looking for bidders in all of the sectors. That's why I asked the question, though, because at a certain point, yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll and Councilman Duncan.
Speaking of participation, talking to several vendors out there, they want to be more involved with the process and trying to win bids. Their biggest concern I've seen from them, and I've actually brought it up to the city manager, was the website that's out there for all this, that they say they have to go through all these jobs, looking for hours sometimes, and all the information that's out there, rather than be able to try to find the jobs that are specifically what they're maybe looking for, that's what the RFP is for, so maybe try to get more specific. And even maybe just if some company's a painting company, all the paint jobs can be emailed out like once a week or, you know, be able to sort it so that way they can go specifically for those jobs, because they feel like they want to be more involved, but sometimes spending that time at the computer, when, you know, they can have a job that they can be doing somewhere else, they have to wait, all right, am I going to bid for a city job, or am I going to go to this job privately somewhere else? So they would like to see the process sped up of trying to be able to sort through things and get to the jobs specifically for them.
So one thing I'm going to put on the record tonight, as some of you all might say, I would ask that they contact me in my office. Also, the way our e-procurement system works, when a vendor registers, they register for as a, they use a commodity code. So if they're a painter, they'll select the commodity code that is reflected to those types of jobs that are out there. And as they're registered, when we release a bid and we're looking for painting services, for instance, it's going to send them an automatic notification. On top of that, in the city manager's weekly report, we don't just list what's out there currently, we'll also list anything that we are working on or anticipate releasing within the next few weeks. So we do try our best to put information out there, but I do get that understanding that a lot of people just don't want to sit at the computer and don't want to wait for that notification. I'd ask that they just reach out to me directly in a brief email and say, hey, I'm a painter or I'm a general contractor in the area, and this is kind of what I do. Do you know of anything in the works? Do you have anything out currently out to bid? If I don't, I do, to the greatest extent possible, try to share that with different department directors, such as facilities, and say, hey, I just learned of a new contractor out here. Here's their information. If you have anything that comes up that maybe falls below the bidding threshold, maybe they can just reach out to them directly and get a quote.
Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'll sign on to the comments, but Councilmember Valdivia Alcala, it's been great, the effort the committees put in and that you folks have done to meet their goals through the sets, and I think those quarterly meetings have been very helpful with the vendors who show up and how to do work with us, because it is complicated and has a lot of pieces. So I encourage everybody, when they ask me similar questions, the Councilman Kell is like, have you been to one of those? Because if you go to those, they'll lay it all out for you, it'll get you in the system. But there are two data sets I would love to see. I do not expect you to have them tonight, but I am curious, first of all, what this 43% equates to percentage-wise for dollars? So does it equate to 3% of the dollars we're actually bidding out total, or is it closer to its actual number? It's not, and that's okay. But I'm just curious if you could figure that out, and it will be perfect. And then I'm also curious about the diversity within the diversity. In other words, this 43% number is based on the bids, right? It's not based on the number of companies we're contracting with, correct? Okay, so I'd be interested just to see, of that 43%, is it the same 10 companies equating to that 43% getting those bids? Or are we, how are we doing in bringing in those new people and kind of diversifying those? So I know you don't have any of that tonight. I don't need... those? So I know you don't have any of that tonight. I don't need it, you know, by morning, but I just, those would be two data sets, I think, would be helpful to give us some more context to see where you've made improvements in the work that you're doing to get us there. So thank you.
So just for clarification, on that second item, the number of different contractors that are part of that 43%, okay. Thank you.
And then I'll add to that, I came really prepared tonight. So I do have a percentage amount. It equates to about 2.5% dollar-wise. And I could, I could give you the exact figure at a later date, but I do have those figures ready.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Miller.
Please tell me if I just heard you right. 2% of the bids that go out go to minority men and women businesses?
No.
So I heard that wrong. Please clarify, because I know I'm not the only one that's listening to this right now.
What is 2%?
It's 8%.
So, please. So 43% of the bids are going out to those diverse vendors. But of the total dollar amount that are within all the bids we do in the city, 2.5% of the dollars are going to those vendors. But that also goes to part of Leah's point, what they're working to do more is, we're finding more people who can do the larger projects, right? Because obviously, if you're a construction company, the majority of our dollars are going to infrastructure projects. That's for a lot of minority-owned businesses, a newer industry that they're finally able to get into. So that's what she was talking about earlier, about trying to diversify the bigger contract people, too.
Yep, understood there. So I did hear right. Okay, so historically, is that always type, is that always the type of percentage that we're getting, with 2%, say in a five to 10-year range?
So point of clarification on a couple of things. We only track prime contractors, the general contractors. So we can't say for sure how much of the general contractor money is going to their subcontractors, which could consist of a lot of different diverse vendors. Secondly, the 2% that Louis is referring to is all city spend. So the dollar amounts that he's referring to in that 2% is not just contracts through our bidding process. It's also those that fall in the quote threshold and general POs and payments that are rendered through those processes as well. So can you repeat the rest of your question?
I don't think I need to now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Duncan asked, the first part of the questions I was going to ask. The second part, including what he asked for, was, is there a sharing when you're putting this information out to the general target population that you're trying to bring in of the categories that are being awarded, so that potential persons who want to register say, well, I didn't even know that these categories were available, so now that I know, I can register myself and get myself in on this. Is there some way, like you just explained, that a general contractor, you're not being able to track who he subcontracts to, or she contracts to. But it's just an idea in my head. I'm thinking, well, I know for some people I've talked to who said, well, I didn't know that I could bid for, that that need was even available. So some way to make the general population that you're trying to recruit and grow in numbers know that, hey, there's a gap here. There's an opportunity that I didn't know beforehand. Is there some way to, I guess, define that in a way that potential bidders would know?
So Louis had mentioned that one of the things on our 2025 recommended actions are to highlight success stories of contracts that are awarded to minority women and disadvantaged businesses. And so we want to work that into our program where we can tell about the bids that are awarded to small diverse businesses in the community. Second part of that is continuing to educate more about how to be a subcontractor, and it's not always all about the large, winning the large contract, but getting that network built for them with those prime contractors in the community to know that they can get on our site and they can sign up as a plan holder for that project, so that when that prime contractor goes to put their bid in, their contact name and email and phone number are listed right there, so that any prime that's interested in subcontracting or hiring them as a subcontractor can just pick up the phone and call them to say, I noticed you put your name as an interested subcontractor. What portion of the work are you willing to do and at what price? And then they can build that, build that relationship and collaborate and hopefully partner well to make the project more successful. So it's, it's continuing to educate, which we haven't had a lot of opportunity to talk specifically about the subcontracting process and what that looks like. And so 2025, we're really going to hone in on that part of our process and our pieces of education in our workshops that we host, so that we can get down to the true method that some of these prime contractors follow to hire their subs.
I like that answer. Good. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just have a quick question. What about the people that apply, that keep applying that are not getting these opportunities? Do you guys look at them and see what they're doing wrong? Do you look at how they're filling out?
So I'll, let me know if I don't answer your question entirely. When a bidder submits a bid, and it's a, let's say, a construction or a painting or anything that's labor-specific, it's lowest responsive responsible bidder. And so if they're not the lowest, then the odds of them winning that bid are, it's probably not going to be awarded to them. We try to provide feedback when they solicit information from us, or even upfront before they even bid. Did you know that you can go in the system and look at that bid that was previously awarded that has similar components and see what other contractors bid on it? We're, we're open to the public, so all of that is public record. They can also request that information, and they can submit bids that are more competitive that way. That's the hope, is if, if they solicit that information from us, we can help them find that information to make their bids more competitive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the questions? Okay. Well, thank you both for the presentation. Very informative. Thank you for the good work, too.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another presentation. Madam Clerk.
The second presentation we have is on the Joint Economic Development Organization. It's an update on JADO.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the city manager asked me today to give you an overview of JADO, just as a refresher on the Joint Economic Development Organization of Topeka. Every other year, the city of Topeka takes charge of the administration of it, and then the opposite year, the county does. So 2025 is a city year, so it is our responsibility. And so as next week, you will select JADO members, he thought it might be a good opportunity to just review what the functions are for you as a body, as well as the public. Okay, so a brief history of JADO. This was established by interlocal agreement between Shawnee County and the city of Topeka in 2001. It's comprised of a board of 13 members, and it's funded through the half-cent countywide retailer sales tax established by the interlocal agreement and to be used for economic development. Under the rules of the interlocal agreement, which has been updated from time to time, only certain people get to vote. Not all 13 of the board members get to vote. The three county commissioners get to vote. The mayor of the city of Topeka gets a vote. The deputy mayor, which you will select tonight, gets a vote. And then two city council members who you select as JADO members get official voting rights. That being said, you get a little bit more flexibility than the county. For some reason, one of your voting members cannot be present. It does allow alternates to be selected, so that you can continue to maintain your same split of voting powers at a meeting. So if you are one of the selected members and you cannot serve for any reason, they do have proxy abilities. All of the rest of the six council members who are not official voting members are considered non-voting members of JADO and welcome to participate in meetings. Councilpersons are selected at the third governing body meeting in January after the election of the deputy mayor. I will tell you, I got a question today and said, why is that? It used to be that you selected these at the same meeting as the deputy mayor. Why did that change? Basically, a resolution was passed in, oh, after 2015, I think, after the election changes from April to January, that put this at the third meeting, because at that point, you guys got sworn in at the second Monday in January. Then a lobbyist got that law changed, and we moved it around by ordinance, but at that time, the resolution to JADO never got amended. And so that's a very convoluted way to say that I've been requested to draft a resolution to fix that for moving forward in future years. So in future years, provided you pass the resolution, you'll be appointed and voted on at the same meeting.
Thank you.
Who is the chairperson? Like, it's the fun opportunity to run your meetings. That would be the mayor in odd years, and it would be the chair of the county commission in even years. So the mayor will be serving as the chairperson for the meetings this year. Also, as I've said, administration rotates, so the city clerk takes on the administrative roles. Other administrative duties, for instance, like the lawyer for JADO, in odd years, switches over to the city attorney. It switches over to the county counselor in even years. Responsibility for answering Open Records Act questions, those things also switch as well. So there are various administrative functions that switch. JADO, if the public wants to tune in and watch, always meets on the second Wednesday of February, May, September, and December. So you do meet four times a year. These meetings are open to the public, and they are televised. Public comment is allowed on each actionable agenda item, and at the end of each meeting, citizens are given four minutes to speak, and comments must be related to the topics directly related to JADO business. And then finally, how are JADO funds spent? This is raised through the countywide sales tax. So of that, the interlocal agreement calls for $5 million annually to be spent for economic development priorities of JADO administered through Go Topeka. That's administered through a contract that JADO approves through Go Topeka. It gives out to bid every so many years. And then finally, the remaining of it is split for infrastructure. It is funded through a countywide sales tax, so that is generally split according to a percentage unless you agree to a different percentage. You guys agreed during the interlocal agreement way back when to split that in a different percentage. So 52% goes to the county for specific projects, and 48% goes to the city of Topeka for specific projects. JADO can alter the distribution formula or reduce the amount of funds allocated for any particular improvement or project. And each year, at the May meeting, the county and the city are supposed to distribute an updated priority list accompanied by a project status as a matter of information only. And with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions on JADO.
Any questions? Councilman Duncan.
When is our current contract up?
With...
Don't we have, don't we, yeah, don't we reach it, whatever, maybe it's not an agreement with the county to basically operate JADO? I mean, don't we, I mean, and if I'm wrong, we enter an agreement with them, which creates JADO and keeps it operational, and then JADO enters the agreement with the partnership Go Topeka to do with their work, right? That's kind of the steps?
Yes, you are correct. I do not yet have those dates memorized, so I will look them up and get them.
I don't either, but I think it's soon. And so I guess the reason I'm asking, because I think it's within a year or two, I guess I will put out there, at some point, we need to decide how we want to have a conversation amongst ourselves as to what that, what we think should look like the next one, if we have suggestions, because some of us do, and some of us, you know, for what we may want to revisit that as we look at that. So...
Yeah, I will.
Before we're sitting here, we're like, it's renewed in a month. We have to sign it. And we're like, wait, what? So, but I do feel like it's sooner rather than later. So just put that out there. Come with the process for a discussion on any changes we might want to make when we enter into negotiations on the new one. Thank you.
Josh Ferry helpfully sent me the contract, and the interlocal goes from January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2031.
Current one's not till 2031?
Correct.
Really?
Well, Josh sent me with the interlocal, but...
I don't doubt that. I guess in the future, let's not sign, that's, oh, that's the interlocal. That's not...
That's the interlocal.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. Just let us know. But I think it's soon.
Are there any questions for the city attorney? Clarifications? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Amanda. Move on to their third presentation. Madam Clerk?
The third one is the Prevention and Resiliency Services PAR's Funding Overview.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Mandy Chikansky, PAR's executive director, will lead us to this item. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council for having us tonight. I'm Mandy Chikansky, as the city manager referenced. And with me is Isabel Huckins, who is serving currently as our Safe Streets lead through this project. So today, I'm here to kind of give you an update on what's going on with Safe Streets, because we've been a little bit in flux and trying to reassess the program. So to give you a little brief history, the Safe Streets program was brought to Topeka, modeled after the program in Tacoma, Washington. It was put together after an uptick in crime. Violent crime started happening around 1994. The original advisory council, First Neighborhood Watch, were formed in 95, 1995, as my kids say, the 1900s. They focused on neighborhood watches, cleanups, crime-free multi-housing, a lot of the same things that we are currently doing in a little different way. Ultimately, they started the Safe Streets Coalition in 2004. We, I have been at PAR since 2021, and so I arrived at PAR's post-pandemic, and a lot of things changed in our world. And I know people are probably getting tired of hearing, oh, it's, everything's changed after the pandemic. So we have to recognize that and be aware. And what we noticed happening was that our coalition was really not operating as coalition any longer, and we needed to look at ways to better address what was the needs in the city, what our communities were needing, and what that culture looks like. There's been a lot of research on what, what is, what do people need post-pandemic? And it's smaller, more comfortable settings, more small, smaller engagements that are familiar to them. Also, news is readily at our fingertips. We can find just about anything we need on a device, whether that be a computer, our cell phones, that type of thing. And so people's ability to educate themselves is really very much out there and available. So people are seeking information differently. So in 2024, we've had a few different goals, and I'm finalizing my report to turn into the city tomorrow. We started with some community events, and we were really struggling with getting engagement at those community events. We started with great speakers, always, I thought, with Chief Wheeler, then Sheriff Hill, and February 1st of last year. Moved into some preparing for summer, focusing on safety there with those speakers. And then our third event was supposed to be a national night out, and we knew there was no way we could do national night out in a community event. So we considered our national night out community event as an education piece, because we had 30, over 30, community partners there, educating the community that participated at our community-wide event. We also had 29 neighborhoods that participated in their own national night out events. We've also provided education over the course of the year to 34 groups on the topic of their choice. Here's the big one. We started discussions with Isabel in the spring and about ways that we could really look at revamping the work that we're doing and making it most meaningful. And some things happened that kind of just timing aligned. And we also had the opportunity to visit with members of Civic or the Community Inspired Violence Nervency Coalition. They came to us about some grants they were writing, and some conversations happened. We were connected with Isabel. And then we really met with the leadership of Civic and talked about, what can we do? How can we support you? What, what needs can PAR's help fill in terms of the Safe Streets portion? And they said, hey, we've got these town halls going, where we're meeting with the neighborhoods that are most impacted by violent crime in our community, which are listed there. We could really use your partnership in terms of helping us convene these neighborhoods, once they identify needs that they have, and helping them walk through the process of doing some improvements. And that just happens to be one of this gal's really strong traits. So it just aligned beautifully. So we participated with door knocking and the town hall meetings that Civic put together there in June. They had had some in April. They'd done a community survey, and we just happened to just kind of bump in. just kind of bump in there. And through those town halls, we found some different ways that we might be able to help support. And one of those ways that we, as an agency, helped support was working with Civic to bring Cities United here in August. And we had a number of people there, a number of you were involved in those community stakeholder events that occurred from the 7th through the 9th. Isabel has been working solidly with neighborhoods, those identified specifically, identifying key neighbor leaders that wanted to work on some initiatives and helping them through those processes, identifying what needs they have. And she's currently engaging with 170 active contacts in those specific neighborhoods and a little bit beyond. In November, or, excuse me, December, we partnered with Hillcrest NIA and the Gil Carter Initiative at the Civic Community Health Fair on December 13th. Was a great opportunity to take some of the wonderful community partners that we have to the neighborhoods and help that neighborhood and those neighbors with those resources. And an excellent story was on WIBW where Isabel talked a little bit more about block talks. And I'm going to turn this over to her. And I, before I do that, I want to preface this, what, this, to me, is the Neighborhood Watch of 2025. When we work in the prevention field, we talk a lot about language that can be stigmatizing, and Neighborhood Watch can seem a bit stigmatizing. We're watching, we're watching what's going on, we're watching what's happening. And so Isabel came with this idea of block talks, which is just more, hey, neutral. And so I'm going to turn it over to her and let her talk to you a little bit about what that has looked like.
Yeah. So after all of that research and the work with the community, the work with other organizations, whether it was researching other initiatives in the state or the country, whether it was getting information from different surveys or door knocking, we came up with this concept, this initiative of block talks. And the block talk, one of our block talks is actually how we had the health fair and some other things that we've done. But with block talks, we are finding people in the community, and they kind of work as a community leader to bring together their neighbors. It was off. I'm sorry. So with a different community leader, they can reach out to their neighbors, and their neighborhood can be as large or small as they feel comfortable, and that starts their block talk. With that, they start to come together and talk about what's really important to them, whether it's some things that they want to work on or their strengths. They come together with their resources and their own knowledge, because they really are the experts in their own neighborhoods, to come up with action steps and how they can come together to fix up their neighborhoods and to feel safer. With that, because one of the big things we learned was that the communities all really want connection. And so bringing people together with block talks, even if it's just to meet regularly to get to know each other, is helping build safer communities. So just to give some examples of what these block talks have done so far, the Central Park Block Talk was one of our first ones that we really got up and running. And there was a shooting pretty quickly after we started block talks, and they reached out to us, and they said that they all felt disconnected, they felt scared, they didn't know what they could do, but they felt like they needed to do something. So together, after meeting, we came up with the idea of getting resources to all the neighbors. So you probably have this, and this is a little cutout that we created together with the block talk. And then we all came together and door knocked for hours that next day and just talked with each neighbor about how they were feeling and what they could do, and gave them these resources. And the amount of support that came from just that one instance was overwhelming. I mean, we had people crying and opening up. We had people wanting to know, what can we do next? How do we become a part of this? We had neighbors who had not spoke to each other, even though they lived across from each other, coming out and meeting after we were done door knocking to start to talk about how they felt and how they can move forward. And this was not a one-time thing. This happened more than once, actually, and we did the same thing. And from the very first time we ever door knocked to our most recent, it went from people maybe being a little bit less open or not opening doors to people now all recognizing each other, wanting to open those doors and have these conversations, knowing each other. And it's made a really big difference. And even, one of the things that really stood out was the, one of the neighbors said that this made them feel like, when they felt like they could do nothing, that they now had control and power, even if it was just reaching out to neighbors and knowing what resources they could help give to each other or themselves. And then with our community health there, the neighbors came up with that on their own, too, and very quickly came together, reaching out to different organizations and people to bring resources to the people, because it's not always easy to go and meet with every single organization when it comes to finding out what you need to do for your health. And so making it more accessible and meeting people where they're at is really what block talks is about. Another big thing that came from that health fair was, we created a lot of new partnerships, but also we had so many people ask us how they could start their own. So we now have even more contacts that we're supposed to be meeting with in the next couple weeks to start more block talks. But, so yeah, it's just, it was a very small start because we wanted to make sure we knew what these needed to look like before we went further and expanded all around, but it's been really great so far.
Well, I clicked on something, like, real good. Can I click this?
There we go.
Okay. So a challenge that we're facing. With any small nonprofit, sometimes when you have four people on your staff, you run out of steam. And National Night Out is an activity or event that we have been a part of and putting on for many, many years. And it's very, it's very much enjoyed and loved by those who participate. But what we've found is that attendance is waning. And in 2024, we had one community-wide event, and we had 29 neighborhood events. And in those events, we had 1% of the Topeka population participating. In the greater Shawnee County area, we had less than half of a percent of the population participating. In 2022, our board of directors, we looked at our mission, and National Night Out really doesn't fall under our mission guidelines anymore for PARs. We do not have staff that have the crime and law enforcement background and expertise. We are more of an education and training agency, and that is really where we have focused most of our efforts. Planning this event is really unsustainable for my staff. I'm, I'm not going to lie, it was, it was really difficult. And they did it with smiles on their face and with the, all the goodness in their hearts and buckled in and did amazing work with over 30 community partners there, essentially over 400 hours to put on this event. And so that is about 20% of one of my employees' time. So we don't feel like we are able to host National Night Out in 2025. We surveyed all of our participants with the, the community partners and asked if anyone would be interested in co-hosting and helping put this event on with us, and we were not able to find anyone to do that. We are happy to offer assistance with questions, provide support, give our guidelines, help with resource materials to any new hosts that might be able to successfully transition the event, but we just do not feel like we're able to put it on to the level and expectations that we hold ourselves to. And that is a very real challenge for us at this time. And with that, will stand for any questions that you all might have.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both. It's been a long time since we met, right? And I remember when you first were, after the Neighborhood Watch person left, and you came to the Oakland NIA, and you were just really honest in saying, you're going to have to give time, you know, grace, new to this. But I think that you and I have already talked and some of your staff and said, and you know a lot of this already from me, and that, at least in my district, the NIAs are, you know, really floundering. The Neighborhood Watch is extraordinarily difficult to get off the road. Just with one NIA, we worked a year and a half. We changed dates, we changed times, and this was when the former Safe Streets person was there, did everything we could except stand on our heads, because working with the NIA board, we could just not get the attendance. And, you know, we've stated before that Oakland is, and some of the other NIA pages, but Oakland in specifically, it specifically really utilizes their Facebook page for a lot of that reporting. So seeing the intentionality that has really gone in to try to blaze a new trail, a trail that is new and different and based on things that you all see in other places is working, is refreshing. The questions I do have, though, is, you say the block talks will be the new Neighborhood Watch. And again, you know, couldn't get anybody to meetings, blah, blah, blah. How do you anticipate, since oftentimes the NIA takes on the Neighborhood Watch, what has been the relationship that you all have started to build or are going to be building with the NIAs? And have you started touching base yet with community engagement?
Is it okay for me to say? Yeah. So I think one great example of this is honestly our health fair, because we did that with an NIA. So we're not trying to replace those or work against them. Honestly, block talks are all about bringing everything we have in our communities together, and so we do want those partnerships. And all of the block talks and all of the hosts we've ever had have brought it up and have asked, is this something we present at them? Can we bring these together? And yes, of course, we, we want to work side by side. We are not trying to be something completely different that doesn't also work with it. We really want to be partners.
And, and so have you made that move with community engagement to start getting lined up with NIAs and telling them about who you are and what you're doing?
No, ma'am, we have not. But that is something that, if funded, we would like to take some next steps, but we really felt like we needed to keep this small, like, like Isabel said, and make sure we were doing it very intentionally and being very supportive to those that were wanting to get this going in their areas. The other thing I would say is that the block talk doesn't necessarily have to be the entire neighborhood. I live in a neighborhood with 400 homes. I don't know all of my neighbors in, in my neighborhood, but I do know the few around me. And so sometimes it's starting with that small group and working towards snowballing a little bit larger. And I think we've seen some of that with the Hillcrest group, because we have a couple of different areas around Highland Park High School that are saying, hey, us, too. Hey, we'd like to do this.
Right.
And so I think it's really just tailoring it to the neighborhood and the, and the group of people. It may be the group of people that lives on High, 12th and High, and maybe the, the people at 13th and High say, oh, we kind of like that, can we join? It's not exclusive, it's more of a, we'll, we'll meet you where you are, and, and we're happy to build. It's just really more dependent on if we're able to, to continue with funding.
Well, and I think the funding would be important because, again, we knew the Neighborhood Watch was not working.
Right.
I mean, those numbers, for those phone trees, they were locked away somewhere, nobody could get access to them. We were dealing with the same stories over and over on how to do Neighborhood Watch, and it just was not gaining any traction. So something new and innovative is going to take time to settle in. And I would just say, you know, I would like, I'm going to be setting up a meeting with you because I want to talk to you about, you know, District 2, but I commend you because I think that people want that involvement, and if they may not go to an NIA meeting, they still may be interested in a block talk so they don't have to work against each other. I agree with that. So I just, I think, you know, you guys are on a good path, and I'll be setting up something with you to learn more. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
All right. So I guess I'm, what's elephant in the room this thing? Right? We have a contractor now with you for $60,000 and some dollars, maybe slightly increased request, $61,000 or $62,000, which is part of, for this program. I think where I'm conflicted at this point is, when we entered into that agreement years ago, we, as a city, had a very specific purpose for it, right? To focus on crime prevention efforts, building relationships with city offices, whether it's law enforcement or other positions, and National Night Out. Clearly, the program has shifted. I'm not saying these aren't great things and that that's a bad thing or a good thing, and I'm glad we're getting this presentation, but I feel like we haven't been able to have that conversation with you that said, where you have said, look, we still want to do these things, but we have to make this shift, and to do that, are you okay with that as a city? And I think we have to then decide as a governing body, A, if we're okay with that shift, and if that's the purpose of why we give those dollars out, or if we need to reassess that. I don't have that answer tonight. I know that that's pending and has to be a decision made sooner rather than later. It can't just linger out there for your own edification and resources and what you're trying to do in the community. But I do think we need to acknowledge that that's part of this conversation is, is to how we're allocating those resources and if it's still. And I think the only piece that bothers me the most isn't that we've transitioned Neighborhood Watch to block party or block talks, and that we haven't transitioned some of those, it's the National Night Out piece. Because I feel like, I understand why you don't feel like you can do it anymore. I do feel like the transition, there has been no transition, and that we need to work together to find that whatever the next community partner is, and then we have to decide, do we need to allocate some resources to that partner? Because part of the issue for them is where we're going out to the community and saying, do you want to take this on? Is there going to say, well, yeah, but we don't have some of the resources that you gave to PARs to help them implement this? And so, again, those are all in the pit of things we're swirling around in this, but I mean, and so I just want to put that to the governing body, too, that those are the issues. But for me, the National Night Out piece is the, is the concerning piece of that, that it feels like if we don't do something, we're going to lose it. And I understand the percentages have gone down. I think COVID probably impacted that, you know, and then as we died off. I will say, even though it was 1%, that's still about 1,500 citizens, you know, throughout the community that participate. So, so those are just my random thoughts as I'm processing this alongside you as we go through this presentation. But, so I do like a lot of what you're doing, I just think we have to decide if it's focused on where our resources are going, so. Thank you. I don't know, there was no question in there, and if you want to make a comment, that's great, that's fine.
Councilman Banksen and Councilman Miller.
Hi, Mandy, it's so nice to see you. It's been quite a while. I am looking at my notes, and I see that for many, many years, as you know, I was a representative for the fire department, and certainly National Night Out was very, very important to us. And for us to be really struggling to see where this program is going to go is really troubling to me. I see that we have our PEO person from the fire department. I'm wondering what their participation was, because for me, I did many, many, many night out stops. And I think that kind of helps us, it goes along with the door knocking, because I was able to reach out to families in the classroom through their kids, and we had a great number of people participate. And I'm wondering if we're getting those same efforts from our fire department and PD as we used to.
I will say, with complete respect for our firefighters and police, sheriff, all law enforcement, AMR, we have great participation from them in the, in the events. It's great. And that's not a question at all. And in fact, when this conversation, which has been kind of percolating, when this first conversation was had with someone that I think was charged with coming and asking me some questions, I said, I want to be very clear, this has nothing to do with any, anything other than capacity for my crew. I fully respect all the work that is being done by our first responders, they've been great. We could use help. We could use help with the organizing of the event. It is just a massive undertaking. And perhaps it's my very high expectations of this is the way it's going to go, it's going to be good, it's going to be great, but that's how my team operates. And so I think it's not a question of, of their engagement, they're fully engaged. I just need more help on the planning side, which is really, really difficult for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mandy. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Miller and then Councilman Cal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mandy and Isabel, thanks for being here. I am really intrigued by this block talk. I think it's something I would love to bring to District Six. So I'd like to get on the calendar and have a conversation with you about how we can make that happen. I think there's some areas that could benefit from this. And the second thing is my hope that the staff will be able to work with PARS and figure out our next partner very poactively. I mean, we are in January, and stuff like that needs a lot of time. As you see, we're talking about 440 hours, and if somebody's taken it over, it's going to be more than that to be able to figure it out. So I hope that we can work quickly with them to be able to figure out who the new partner is. Because I shared Duncan's thoughts. I want National Night Out to continue. The DA's office, for years, we used to love going out to those events. It's a great way for the community to engage with different agencies around here. So I hope that we're able to get that figured out. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Cal.
How many locations within the city limits for National Night Out this last year?
29. We actually had 30 signed up, but there's always something that happens that causes someone to fall off. So we had the 29 neighborhoods and the community work.
Now, has there been any maybe looks at maybe just looking maybe at at-risk neighborhoods and/or maybe combining some neighborhoods together and maybe cutting this in half where it may not take as much planning and as much detail needed for every single location that might be able to sustain this but not end it completely?
We talked last year, we started the year off last year having some of these conversations, and it was initially decided that perhaps with the strain, that it might be better to have just one event, and that's where we went to the community event. But then one of our stakeholders said, you know, you really probably need to ease and have the neighborhoods, allow the neighborhoods to do it. And so we did that. So there's definitely opportunity. Like, we are learners. We want to do, we want to do things well. There's opportunity to do any number of things in terms of the event. It's just who can do it? Who has the capacity to do it? Who can, who can we work with to get it going? What can we do? Because I think that the opportunities are unlimited. It's really, it could be very focused on at-risk neighborhoods. I know some of our neighborhoods with block talks are very much interested in doing events much like this. And Isabel and I have had that conversation just this week about that. And so it's just more of how can I support my small crew and be mindful of them and their mental health, which is a big deal to this gal, and meet the needs of everyone? And we've kind of hit the point where we're at, we don't know that we can do it anymore. And so, hell.
One idea I kind of have almost is you can almost break this down, like you said, into almost maybe quadrants or something like that, and rotate it around. So someone like me that has High Crest, I'm in Southern Hills, and I can't remember the neighborhood that's just west, or just east of High Crest, you know, there are several city parks there that if we kind of rotate, and then we can kind of get to know those neighborhoods also, because, you know, I'm right next to High Crest, but I don't have to go into High Crest unless I have something to do there for the council, you know. So this way I can get to know people. And for instance, like the weather event we just had, the more we get to know our neighbors around the whole area, the more we can go out and help all those people. Because I just think it's an event that's good, and like I said, if we could even find some way to make it smaller, but also, like I said, rotate it around to different parts of those areas so we all get to know those different parts of our own bigger neighborhood.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller and then Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was aware of some of these changes or, you know, conversations and not aware of some of them. So just so people know, A, first, I appreciate you coming forward with all of this because it's helpful and really appropriate, so thank you for that. I know it's been a struggle, and appreciate you trying some things that we needed to see tried as well. Just to clarify, in District One, I have 10 identified neighborhoods, of which seven are LMI neighborhoods and three are not. And I want to run through the experience with each of these different models. We all know that the NIA's have been shrinking in membership and activity. And I do think that the door knocking and the, what you've been playing with, if you will, is really essential. I've been saying that for a long time. We need grassroots organizing, skills in this town. We need it for our neighborhoods, particularly LMI neighborhoods, but not only. And so I like the fact that you've done some with that. In terms of Neighborhood Watches, sometimes Neighborhood Watch was what groups adopted instead of NIA's, but often it was on top. It was redundant. And so it's, I really appreciate you looking into it. What I do remember was that in the way, in the last few years of your staff person that had been there for so long, one of the things she was coaching, neighborhood associations or interested parties, was that really a Neighborhood Watch can be the most effective with only a few blocks involved, instead of trying for it to be as big as a whole NIA. That getting neighbors who see one another and see who's coming home and who's leaving for work and have their kids babysit each other and things like that is a much more natural Neighborhood Watch scope than what our full Neighborhood Improvement Associations or others like Elm Hurst or College Hill, for instance, would be. So I always, I appreciated that feedback as our years progressed. That said, I mean, I have, I have been seven NIA's. Neighborhood Night Out made a big difference in District One. What would happen is even if the NIA's had become smaller, there was active, I always had seven, and a bunch of the apartment complexes got involved, not just in District One, but citywide, and participated as well. And what we saw, Topeka was award-winning nationally for the quality of the events, the contact of the event, content, as well as the attendance and participation. We were, we were way out in front, and it showed. Every one of those had its own, in my district, year after year after year, had its own character. But all sorts of people, even where there was an NIA, would turn up for Neighborhood Night Out that you didn't see otherwise. There would have been some things that could have been done and then still could be in the future to optimize that, the contact, and then the follow-up with the people who showed up for Night Out. But Night Out, even just once a year, was a tremendous event, again, in my neighborhoods as well as apartment complexes. So frankly, when I heard that it was considered to be just one central location, that took the legs out from under what Night Out is all about, really, for me and for my neighborhoods. And so continuing that, if we can, at the level that it was. I do know that when Night Out started, PARS, I think, had three full-time equivalent folks working on the whole Safe Streets program. By the later years, there was just one. She'd done it for years, and she did it all by herself with that record-breaking numbers and participation and so on. She had it down. So I see the challenge of starting over. But I do want to see, again, all of that continue, and we've talked about getting the grassroots organizing done at the city level as well. So this whole package is, I appreciate you bringing it today. I need to think it through and maybe have some conversations with some other folks. I do know that the police department knew that you'd been struggling with the Night Out thing, too, and had been talking about whether they could develop it internally in the department, perhaps with the VIPS. Has that progressed any, or am I speaking out of turn?
I'm so sorry. I was like, start to interrupt. We have had some conversation with Sergeant Burns. He's, we've been great, like, in communication. But honestly, I've been kind of on hold, wanting to see where we really, on the contract, that I just really felt like we need to, we got to iron it out. And we have no, no issue with communication. We have great communication there. It's just trying to figure this out. And that was something that was raised to me when I was questioned a little, very respectfully, asked about why I was wanting to do some of these things, was, hey, you know, could someone else take it on? Could we look at the VIPS taking it on? And I was like, absolutely, that's a possibility. Like, and if we need to look at reduced funding so that there's funding that can go to them, you know, I don't ever want to say we can look at reduced funding, but I have to be really mindful of those people that are in my care and under my charge, and they matter. And while the community matters, because I'm a lifelong Topeka, born and bred, I also have to think about having people come to work every day.
It's okay. I just, I appreciate you bringing it all to us. Because I'm happy to, I would like to be part of some further conversations, happy to contribute what I can to work on something out. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, Karen already said it. We've been known to be nationally, and that's huge. So I won't take up much time, Mr. Mayor. I do, I always did enjoy it. It's been a hassle at times. I understand that. I want to talk about Night Out. One time, we were on the trolley. That's how long ago we've had it. And we got to Central Park, and the police chief then and some of the police officers had to jump off and go to a robbery at something at 12th and, on 12th Street. So even, even in the mix of us talking about it and going through the neighborhoods, the one thing that I really, really liked is that we have people on the trolley that have never been through those neighborhoods, never seen that. And I don't know why, I mean, there's not a neighborhood in Topeka that scares me. And so it brought awareness to not only government officials, but other people as well, you know. And so I think that sometimes it was a way to show people in our backyard what's going on. So I really hate to hear that news. Hopefully, there's somebody out there that's listening, but we've had it, we've been in the top 10 for nationally several years, and we've been on the national news for that. That's how good of a job that Ms. Wilson did. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments?
If I may, I think as much as anybody around here, I'm associated with Safe Streets and how it got started and how it operated here in the city of Topeka. And over the years, don't hate anything else that, when you're trying to address crime in the neighborhoods, you have to be adaptive. You have to change your operations for those that are most effective. At first glance, for me, I recognize some of these initiatives, but with a different name. So I'm just wondering how much of a change that is then? If it's just a name change, something different to show some adaptation to what the current climate is or the feedback that you've gotten from the neighborhood? I do take note of Councilman Duncan's comments. For myself, I don't need to be involved in every little thing that happens in this city. I do offer myself as a resource and a contact. I would have hoped that some of this would have been brought to the governing body, to myself, Deputy Mayor, myself, to discuss it before we brought it here, so that if there were these kinds of questions, that we could have addressed them. Because I think the city needs to, if not provide the muscle, needs to provide some input into how Safe Streets, if it's going to continue to receive funds from the city, how it will operate in any significant way. So I hear a lot of support for National Night Out. I've tried to go as many as I can. I quit getting on the bus because the bus wouldn't go to the NIA's that I wanted to, so I would just follow the bus, get out of my car and just go to as many as I could, and sometimes just veer away from the bus and go to some others, because those NIA's had directly requested that I show up then as a councilperson. So I appreciate that you've brought this to us, you've presented it as an adaptation to what Safe Streets initially started as, and I think that's important, so I'm not opposed directly. But I am concerned that there seems to be some shift, but some of it, for me, I see is renaming. And if that's the real effort and not much more detail behind it, I'd like to have some more conversations with you, staff, and anybody else who'd care to join as you move forward with it. But thank you very much for all the work you do. I know it's intensive work. I've known a lot of the people who have worked there at Safe Streets, and I know that that National Night Out just consumes them. And so whatever we can do to support it as a governing body, I'd like to be able to offer that to you. Okay?
Absolutely. And I would just say that I'm happy to have any conversation, because there's been some other, other conversations that have happened, and I apologize, and I wholly own not coming to you all before. And I will take that and own it wholeheartedly. And if there's more conversations that need to have, where there's questions, I am open to any conversation. Our doors are always open. You're welcome to come. Give me a call, anything, and I'll be happy to go into a little bit more rationale or anything to help for clarification.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Ray.
Thank you. I just wanted to say I would like to be a part of any further conversations. And to clarify, since my name was up there, that I had the conversation about my district.
Absolutely.
So you guys were telling us, you know, telling me where, you know, your thoughts were and stuff, and I listened and just did my input because we had, because of the challenges that we were facing with Neighborhood Watch, just tremendous challenges. So I don't want anybody, I didn't have any scoop, none of that. So, thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Well, thank you both for the presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That completes our presentation through the evening. Madam Turgeon, next agenda item.
So the consent agenda, we have minutes of the regular meeting of December 17, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay. It's a short consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Councilman Dover, second by Councilman Miller.
We can do consensus. Everybody's okay with that on consensus?
Do we need to do the machine?
It's not working.
Oh, okay.
This plane is not working. I apologize. So we can do consensus on consensus.
Is there a consensus on the motion?
We are working on it, yes.
Say, aye? Any opposed? No, okay.
Ten yes, the motion carries.
Okay. Move on to the next agenda item, and that is the election of the next-serving deputy mayor. Well, I got the wrong script here then.
Can you point a clarification? From legal, since the next action item, do we just need to remove it? Make a motion to remove it? Do I need to make a motion to move it to a future meeting, just in case it comes back around? Or can we just pass over it?
I think it would be cleanest to just pass over it.
Okay. Thank you.
So then it's two items?
No. Just for A, for B needs to happen.
Next three.
Okay. So we're going to withdraw item A, and then B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Emprez regarding a capital request for service elevator repair at Hotel Topeka.
Breaking news. Thank you for the copy. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Braxton Kopley, our assistant city manager, will lead us through this item. Thank you, Mayor. As discussed during the TDC meeting, Hotel Topeka has two, I'll call them patron elevators for the guests, and then it also has a service elevator. Unfortunately, the drive unit on the service elevator has reached the end of its useful life. It is broken. It is obsolete. It cannot be repaired. The cost of replacing that drive with a new digital drive is $32,191.55. We respectfully ask the governing body to pass the resolution to fund that so that we can get the service elevator at Hotel Topeka repaired and back operational.
Okay. Heard the request from Braxton. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilman Duncan, second by Councilman Dobler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Opposed. No.
Okay, so we have...
Okay. Council, Deputy Mayor Alcala, Councilwoman Ortiz, Councilman Banks, and Councilman Miller.
Okay. So we have six ayes. The motion carries.
Okay. Move on to the second action item, 5B. Madam Clerk?
C is election of deputy mayor to survey one-year term pursuant to Topeka Municipal Code Section A2-26C.
Deputy Mayor, I mean, Council, City Manager G. This thing's got me all screwed up.
Thank you.
Braxton went away.
Millie, you'll see, sir. It's the election of deputy mayor. Yeah, that's why Braxton stepped away. But the city, I think the city clerk has explanation. Thank you.
So Mayor, do you want to explain the election of the deputy mayor? Or you want me?
You go ahead. My script keeps changing.
Okay. So in front of you, you have a set of ballots. There should be six of them. You are, so what we will do is open nominations according to the governing body rules and nominate the first person that is automatically nominated is Councilmember Kell. And then we'll move on to different nominations as we roll through this. But we have written ballots, so as we nominate, you'll pick the person, you'll checkmark the person, you'll sign it at the bottom and pass it to the city clerk, and we will tally the vote. So the person that receives the most votes will be the next deputy mayor.
Okay. What has also been provided to you is a document that outlines the duties of the deputy mayor. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, you might want to take a quick look at it. City Attorney, I want to make sure that I don't get out of bounds. Do I need to read this admonition or the same thing that she just went through?
No. Just as a point of clarification, though, for anyone in the audience, this is while a ballot election, those are maintained in the clerk's office in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So there is no violation by voting by ballot.
Okay. Any questions for the city attorney or anything before we proceed?
But yes, step one is the nomination.
Okay. So according to the governing body rules and procedures, council members who have served the longest period of time and have not previously served as deputy mayor will automatically be nominated. Therefore, Councilmember Kell would automatically be nominated to serve as deputy mayor. You've had the explanation about the ballots. My question then is to Councilmember Kell, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. He's accepted the nomination. The floor is now open for any additional nominations for the role of deputy mayor. Councilman Miller?
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Hiller.
Okay. Councilwoman Hiller, do you accept the nomination?
I wasn't expecting it, so, yes.
Okay. Are there further nominations? Councilman Dobler?
I move nomination seats.
Okay. Nominations are now closed. Now, we will proceed with the ballot voting. As indicated, pick one person on your ballot and sign it. Do you want to pass it to you?
Yes, that'd be great.
Okay. Ballot, we have Kell. Second one is Hiller. Third is Hiller. Fourth is Kell.
Mike, Mike, my name is Robert.
Thank you.
You start again. Brenda?
All right. First one is Kell. Second one is Hiller. Third one is Hiller. Fourth is Kell. Five is Kell. Six is Hiller. Seven is Kell. Eight is Kell. Nine is Hiller. And 10 is Kell.
Four is Hiller.
Okay. Councilmember Kell has received six votes and Councilmember Hiller has received four votes. So Councilmember Kell will serve as the new deputy mayor.
Okay. Thank you for your vote. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. As I move forward, we hit the, the funding request, A, is there a 5B funding request now?
We're done.
Okay, we're done.
Non-discussion.
Okay. Okay, non-action items. Madam Clerk?
A is discussion on the execution of an agreement for saving or assigning interests and rights from the Boys and Girls Club of Topeka to Save Inc., Strategies Against Violence Everywhere, for the dispersment of 2025 funding.
City Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Josh McInarney, Deputy Director of Finance, will lead us through this item. And City Attorney Stanley will be available for questions after. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, governing body. Tonight, so just a high-level overview of what SAVE is, is last two years, we've given them $75,000 of our general fund money through the budget process for their program. And high level, it's just a coordination of law enforcement, social service agencies, and community members, aiming to reduce crime rates among certain youths from becoming not violent offenders or victims of crime. And basically, Boys and Girls Club used to run this program, but they've informed us that they're no longer going to be running the program. So under this MOU, we would be assigning the rights to a new group called Save Inc., which would be performing the same duties and tasks as the, as the Boys and Girls Club was previously doing. So that's just kind of the high-level overview of, of the reassignment of rights. And the city has to do, the city has to legally reassign the rights, which is why we brought it to the council.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. I am curious, Save Inc., could you explain more about who that is and who?
Yeah, I can send out the, I am not, I wasn't prepared to talk about their organization title unless Manny wants to help me out and save me, but no pun intended. But I'll have your time then.
I don't know when you have puns. But so, under the MOU that the governing body entered into two years ago, it required any change in assignment to go through the governing body, which is why we're here. When Boys and Girls Club notified the Finance Department that they were no longer going to be participating with the district attorney, Finance reached out to the district attorney's office. They notified us that Lindsay, and I'm drawing a blank on her last name, who has ran the program for Boys and Girls Club, that they were in conjunction with the DA creating Save Inc., which is a new nonprofit specifically for this purpose.
Okay. Okay, I kind of want to know who, how that whole, okay. Thank you.
Deputy, well, Councilwoman Valdivia.
I, I do have some comments that I want to read about this because I think everybody knows that I've had some concerns about SAVE. And now the whole Save Inc. just really kind of, I don't know what it does. But for several years now, a number of grassroots agencies that work in the realm of conflict resolution, violence reduction, and deeply in community to try to stem the flow of violence that we have, initially had started out with the district attorney's office and what was known as SAVE back then. We know through newspaper articles and some of these very agencies coming up and talking of how all of this went south when the DA took over the program and its true intention, which was GVI-related, violence intervention-related, was dismantled. Many in community and myself believe that there has been a lack of transparency concerns with aspects of what actual evidence-based approach that SAVE says that they are using. Where is the budget for taxpayers to view? What is their outreach strategy to community to let them know how their evidence-based approach is working and what their successes are? Because again, we are talking about taxpayer dollars. The city attorney was able to provide me and others with quarterly reports, which have a lot of impressive verbiage, charts, et cetera. And once again, they are requesting another $75,000. SAVE has continued to jump from agency to agency. It moved away from the number of longstanding agencies in community when everything was dismantled. They were with PARs for a period of time, then they moved to Boys and Girls Club, and now they are wanting their own Save Inc. It's very concerning when we talk about programs that are, when we talk about programs that are evidence-based, this is what we're talking about. Rigorous, transparent standards. Standards that have been tested and evaluated. Oftentimes, part of this evidence base is there is a requisite peer review when, where you often see a number of articles written about specific methodologies, the successes in the different communities, and reliable outcomes. We see nothing in all of the information that I have seen that stands the true rigor of evidence-based programming. And again, what is their evidence-based programming? We know we are in a very tight budget crunch, and we know that these are taxpayer dollars. And it seems to me, while reports have been provided, really important components still remain either hidden or not apparent or elusive. Over the past year and a half, I've received training by the CDC and other national entities like NACHO, which is the National Association of Community Health, County Health Organizations, and asked, and on, on a true evidence-based programming that deals with community violence initiatives and community violence interruption initiatives. And one of the things that we continue to hear when we were at those conferences or in Zoom meetings is that while partnerships with law enforcement are definitely important, we have never heard of any encouragement with violence reduction programs being run out of the district attorney's realm and with its own nonprofit status. And also, I want to mention that our incoming chief has made comment when asked about strategies for community violence reduction. Strategies, he agreed that dealing with these issues of violence and high crime that we have in Topeka, they do need to have a public health approach, which include the social determinants of health. And those also appear to be missing from the SAVE program. There is another initiative that has been worked, being worked on right now in Topeka that addresses the original intent SAVE, the original intent that SAVE had and with some of those old partners coming on to be a part of this group. And it's in development, and it is working and utilizing tested ways to reduce community violence and violence intervention. A number of these agencies have come together, along with the hospital, Stormont Vale, and again, are dealing in solid evidence-based programs. This entity has received a grant from the Department of Justice in 2024, since Shawnee County was one of 19 locations across the nation to receive funding. Three counties in Kansas were selected by the Department of Justice because each of these counties in Kansas had a high rate of violence and did not have a true and documented evidence-based programming in place. And again, this funding was received in 2024. And the other counties are Wyandotte and Sedgwick. So I know that this is discussion time only, but I will say right off the bat, more money to SAVE program just feels like another way of wasting taxpayer money. We know that youth are very, very important, yet we also know that there are any number of youth outreach programs to seek, that seek to do what SAVE is doing and feels like a duplication of services. It seems they are not having to go also through the same rigors of providing a budget and, and all of the, all of the immense amount of paperwork as our social service grants process. So because of that, again, even though this is a discussion evening, I will not be supporting this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Just a question. What is the source of these funds and which department are they budgeted in?
So it's the general, it's coming out of the general fund. And then it's budgeted through a miscellaneous, non-apartmental line item. So that's just kind of, anything that's not related to a department, that's where those funds would be associated with.
Okay. And, and this has only been going for two years, is that what?
So we paid them $75,000 last year, and then we're scheduled to pay them this year $75,000. But obviously, we have to bring it back to the governing body since we're reassigning the rights. So we haven't paid them for 25 yet.
Understood. Just trying to get some context. Thank you for that. And, you know, for what it's worth, I've been on the council for a while, and the social services grants at one point pulled all the grants in from the other, that had been directly administered by other departments so that they were considered with the same standards as the social service block grant. Applicants were outcomes-based, database, and so on. And then it was only a few years ago that those got pulled back out of the social service grant consideration process and got tucked back into the individual departments. And so as we're considering what to do with this, someone raised a good point about the qualifications I'm reporting. So it's another way to do it if we continue. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we are going to change from SAVE to Save Inc., when is somebody going to give us information on Save Inc.? Who they are, what they do? Or is it just a name change? I would just like staff to reach out to me and give me that information.
We, we can reach out to the executive director and have him circle back on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussions?
I'll wait till the top.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. It's at five minutes till eight. We have a number of people signed up for public comment. I want to make sure that we're able to listen to them all. So if you will indulge us with a quick five-minute break, we'll be right back in our seats so that we can give our full attention to those who have showed up for public comment. So we'll take a quick recess at five till eight. Get back in your seats if you can by 8 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, if we can get started. Okay. We're back in our seats. We'll proceed with public comment. Have a number of people signed up. I will call them as they are listed. First person is Chelsea Miller. Chelsea Miller. Okay, move on to the second. Cheryl Richardson. Cheryl Richardson. Cheryl Richardson. Peggy Marie Howe. Peggy Marie Howe. Peggy Marie Howe. Okay, I know this one. Danielle Twelmo. I see her right there.
These ones are important sometimes, you know. So I want to make sure that we can... I appreciate all of you. So I want to thank Dr. Pres for holding a special budget discussion. So I want to thank Dr. Press for holding a special budget discussion. I recognize he inherited a lot, and Josh does an excellent job of breaking things down, and I really appreciated the thoughtful dialogue from council members. However, I must address some troubling things that we're missing. Topeka is out of crockroads, and our residents are struggling to make its meet, yet millions of our taxpayer dollars are wasted on broken promises and mismanagement, and this mustn't. So where's the accountability for the outstanding debts that are owed to the city by individuals and corporations? Developers have cost taxpayers millions of dollars with little consequences. Considered, Lawrence Bay. News reports from 2015 state we are $11 million possibly in the hole after upfront investments in sewer lines, specials, sidewalks, road construction, along with unprecedented amount of ongoing maintenance for a neighborhood pond and dam. Or the downtown buildings purchased a decade ago with promises of redevelopment left mostly vacant for years, only to have $6 million of taxpayer money now be funneled into upgrades with no tenants in sight. These failures aren't isolated incidences. They're part of a pattern. And when a community raises valid concerns, we're dismissed as having negativity. And I want to be clear, there's a difference between being proud of where we live and having pride that blinds you to shortcomings. That misplaced pride has allowed these issues to persist. Let's review some numbers. From 2021 and 2022, during a time with a record low workforce, sales tax revenues soared, as we heard. And why did that happen? Well, during that timeframe, while people weren't working, an unprecedented amount of people received a living wage from unemployment. They were giving $15 an hour. Plus, we had stimulus payments from the federal government. So what did our citizens do when they had money? They spent it on our community. They supported local businesses. Our economy then thrived, and we had record number of sales tax. But yet now, we're returning to policies that place burdens on the very people who kept our economy afloat. Nearly 46.6% of our community is low to moderate income. That means that almost half of our community makes less than $50,000 a year, and almost half of them make less than $25,000 a year. Meanwhile, our expenses have skyrocketed. From 2017 to 2023, the median income in Topeka increased to a mere 1.28%, almost stagnant. For comparison, our water utility rates since that same timeframe have increased 65% on our water utility rates. It should be noted that I went back to our news reports, and every time that it came before this council to request a water utility rate, the exact same justification was given: that we have aging infrastructure and 100 miles of line replacement every single time. We don't want to use inflation as an excuse either because we actually, in the 2019 study, used a 22.6% inflation rate to cover those. So that's not the issue. Rent is highest in Topeka than 89% of Kansas, and that is a 24% to 31% increase in this timeframe. We have gas, we have food, all of these things have surged, and people are doing multiple jobs to stay afloat. We were told that we were going to have ARPA dollars, right? And that 35.7 million of these ARPA dollars had to be spent to pay down our debt, and debt that we had that was also not going to be occurring interest that we weren't going to be having to pay on. And with all of that, we are still here. We still have miles of pipes that need to be replaced, and aging infrastructure, lack of truly safe and affordable housing, and a community that has been giving and giving. Can I get two?
Additional time? How much?
Can I just have two?
Pardon?
Can I have two?
Is there a motion? Motion and second for additional two minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proceed.
Thank you. These decisions erode public trust. Giving corporations 25% tax breaks when they fail to hire locally or fulfill their promises is not economic development, it's exploitation. And we must hold entities accountable. We need to conduct comprehensive audit of each department's spending, as well as efficiency, and any outstanding debts that are owed, we need to enforce collection. We need to review contracts and ordinances to ensure accountability from developers and corporations. We need to shift priorities to directly benefit residents, such as focusing more forward-facing revitalization in underdeveloped areas and encourage development that aligns with local needs, rather than speculative growth in external developers. This is actually a strong town approach, and I want to quote something. This isn't unique to Topeka. This is well documented, and I want to say, "The temptation is understandable: chase after new jobs and new growth at any cost." But this approach can lead to a race to the bottom, with different cities competing to see who can give away the most stuff in the form of tax breaks and other incentives to a big employer looking to move or expand, and can also tempt cities into chasing smoke stats by expanding infrastructure and subsidizing new development with the hopes that if we build it, they will come. But inevitably, jobs are not the same thing as residents, and cities are often merely subsidizing population growth for the town next door. We are seeing that, as we learned from our meeting on Thursday, that 40% of our workforce doesn't live here, right? So we must be paying attention to these funding that we are doing in this budget process focusing on our citizens, because that is how our economy thrives. That is economic development, not cutting services and letting people who owe us millions of dollars continue to get away with it. So I appreciate that extra time, and I can always send references if you need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, next person we have signed up is Henry McClure.
Henry McClure, Topeka, Kansas. Good evening, Your Honor. How are you? Cheers. It was interesting to have the Jeddoh recap. What we need to do is we need to talk about why we had Jeddoh in the first place. Had a long talk with Joan Wagnon. You know her? So anyway, Joan was telling me how we got here. And when I moved back to Topeka, I'd never seen a Chamber of Commerce so weak in my life. But what has happened is the pendulum has swung to the other direction. We are run by the Greater Topeka Partnership, we're run by the Chamber of Commerce, and Go Topeka. And you've got all the same people on the, on all the different boards. And what we don't have is the Citizens Committee that was passed into state law. I passed that around. Well, I found a member, she'd be, she'd be a great person running the Citizens Committee. But we need to, we need to change how we do things. We're taxing people out of their homes. At the same time, we're giving a guy $9.2 million to build a failed project. We shouldn't be giving the oligarchs $9.2 million and signing a 10-year lease and doing $6.5 million in public improvement. I talked to the, the guy that was going to take the Wolf's Camera, bio-laboratories. Anyway, I spoke with him on the phone. I don't have my notes in front of me. But that guy was telling me how much money he invested, how much time he invested, and what a failure that project was. And he would like to actually reengage if he could get the deal that's on the table. And here's the thing about it, he told me that Molly Howie was responsible for the leasing of the project. So what makes you think 2.0 is going to be any easier? You guys aren't spending the money right. This is where my grandma would tell you, "The chickens are coming home to roost." They really are for you guys. You bought a hotel, $36,000 for the elevator. I gave you an offer of $7.6 million. Not me personally, but I was involved with the team. $7.6 million, and never got a counteroffer. You paid $554,000 to a consultant to do what? I heard you spent $17,000 to survey 500 people? That's $34 a person? I can tell you how that's going to come up. Think about the 5,400 people that you just voided one night entering court with Earl McIntosh and his petition. You really don't want to listen to us. You're listening to the oligarchs of this town, the, one minute, I'm getting out of here. Hey, the bakery, the distribution centers, they didn't grow our tax base. You gained jobs to the working poor. They got second jobs. Go, go down to Coyote Canyon, they're waiting on your table. They'll tell you about what it's like to work on the line in Mars. But we need to do things differently. So sales tax, you thinking about adding another sales tax? Hang on. How long have I been down here trying to say we ought to support sales tax? Because that's all I know, is retail development. We don't even support the very thing that creates the money for you guys to spend. And how many times has Molly Howie told me, "Well, that doesn't create jobs." Tell that to the Chick-fil-A people. 85 new kids down there working? Hey, thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll move on. I believe we're on another topic. Kristy Penya? Kristy Penya?
I'm just here to speak upon a gentleman named Lou McGinnis. I live in one of his apartment complexes. I have been there for four years now. When I first moved in four years ago, the apartment complex was really nice to live in. Lately, for the last, I would say about three years, he has gone very downhill on his properties. It's not only the property that I live in, which I live at 5217 Southwest 12 Terrace. He does not do his, you ask for maintenance to come in, it takes him months to get things done. I live there with my children. I do have one child that is disabled. I've had to beg to get things fixed in my apartment complex. The apartment complex itself has gone downhill a lot. It's, it's just sad to see because this gentleman owns a lot of properties here in Topeka, Kansas. He just raised my rent from $5.28 a month to $8.48 a month for a one-bedroom. That's a one-bedroom, when other people around in the apartment complex pay like $7.35 for a two-bedroom. It would be different if he would do things in a timely manner. There's a lot of things that need redone at our apartment complex, and not only mine, but other ones in Topeka. So basically, I'm here to talk, you know, for other people that are afraid to come forward, thinking, you know, Lou might do something, retaliate, and he picks the ones that live in his apartment complexes. But obviously, you guys already know the things that this man is doing and doesn't do, from trash to, we can't even get snow removal from this gentleman. I have elderly people that live in my apartment complex that will fall. I've asked for snow removal, I've asked for icing. He sends over his main guy, Daryl, and he's out there with a shovel trying to scoop snow. So basically, what I'm trying to get done is, I know he's not going to work a miracle, he's not going to be able to just fix things all at once, but this gentleman needs help. And he obviously can't take care of the majority of the apartment complexes, the properties that he has. But there's a lot of people that are in need of their apartments. The structure outside, like the wood on our balconies are coming apart, nails coming out. A lot of it's unsafe. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselwoman Ortiz.
I know we're not engaged in back and forth, but when she was, was she referring to Mr. McGinnis needs help or another, a person at that property needs help? I didn't quite understand.
What happened?
Madam? When you said this person needs help, were you talking about Mr. McGinnis?
Lou McGinnis.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Can I pronounce your name correctly?
Joyce Criddlebaugh.
Okay.
You said it right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight, and I'm going to carry forward with what Kristy just said. I live at Bluewood, and Lou McGinnis is the landlord. And the first year, I just moved in there a year ago, well, it's two now, and the place was inhabitable. I should have never moved in there. But what are you going to do when your stuff is moved in there? I have lived in other apartments, and they've never been like this, ever. I've been in several emergencies there. I mean, and usually on the weekend, you call emergency number, nobody ever calls you back. Rhonda from Code Enforcement, I understood she is retired now, but she helped me in the beginning get this apartment straightened out so I could live there. In fact, they moved me out because the electrical was bad. I can't even tell you the things that were bad in there. My apartment, along with others, was flooded last February. It took hours for someone to respond to the emergency, and it was too late. I already had like this much water in my apartment. It's not only me, I live on the first floor. All the apartments there have water in them. And my insurance doesn't cover like sewer backup or anything. And if it hadn't been for my neighbor Jason upstairs and his sister's rug doctor, I don't know what I had done, because it was seeping into the carpet. It was everywhere. And you've got to worry about your furniture and everything. Anyway, and then Saturday, November 2nd, we had our outside drains, they plugged up again. They had just plugged up like a couple months before that. The apartments up that way were all flooded. Thank heavens it didn't make it to mine. But we, we called somebody this time on November 2nd on a Saturday. No one ever showed up. My neighbor ended up going out and buying a pump to pump the water into the parking lot. We have somebody show up Monday morning. Well, Saturday, it's late, it's too late. It was already seeping into my apartment again and his. So I just am very upset with Topeka. I've lived here, I moved here in 1968 to work, and at 75, I have to have a job so that I can afford the rent, because the rent has gone from $5.58, and if I hadn't signed another lease, I would have been paying $8.48. I just can't afford that kind of rent. And everybody says, "Move. Why don't you just move?" You can't move. It costs a U-Haul, you have to have a background check first and last month's rent. Most of the places, like Martin Brook, Rose Hill, they're like 18 months to two years. So I'm just really sad with the city that you guys have allowed this man to take over. I'm just very upset. And there should be something done with a man that doesn't fix up his apartment, and he keeps buying up apartments. And that's what I needed to come and say tonight, because I believe in my heart that if you have something to say, you should come in and, and say it. And hopefully, something will be done, because shame on all of you and shame on the city for allowing this man to take over these properties and not do anything about it. We have a lot of rot in ours right now. Windows are rotted, our beams are coming out of the steel things, they're rotted on the bottom, and nothing's done. Okay, is that my time up?
Yes.
All right.
Unless you want more.
I've said what I need to say, and I think Kristy did too.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Frederick Redwine, and I am corporate counsel for Eucalyptus. I work directly with and for Lou McGinnis, and I appreciate the two ladies that just spoke. But first, I'd like to begin tonight by apologizing for, the most part, to our residents, those two ladies, and the city of Topeka, and this governing body. two ladies, and the city of Topeka, and this governing body for the trash fiasco. I appreciate their comments, they're valid, and we have addressed it. What has been circulating is innuendo and opinion and things not based in fact about what caused the trash fiasco in the first place. So, I do apologize to our residents, the city, and this governing body. But now, I want to share a brief bit about the facts, about what caused the trash fiasco. Okay? This governing body has heard last week, or the last time, the last meeting, that our trash contracts, we let them lapse, that we didn't keep up with them and they lapsed, and that caused the trash to build up. That's factually incorrect. What happened was our former trash vendor, LRS, which is not a local company, it's based in Chicago and Arkansas, they're not here. Their registered agent, like Lou, who is our registered agent, or Megan McGinnis, it's a family-owned business, their names are listed as the registered agent, you can find out who they are, they have a number. The registered agent for LRS South is Corporation Service Company. That's a black hole. You can't find out who owns it, or who does anything, or how to contact. But the issue is, what caused our problem with the trash, for the city and our residents? LRS retaliated against Eucalyptus because they heard we were shopping for a new vendor, a new national vendor that could actually take care of the job and handle the properties in the correct way, for residents, for the city, and for our properties. Okay? They were under enforceable contracts. But beginning the week of Thanksgiving, and through the first of the year, December 31st, LRS refused to pick up any trash. They did not do their job. They were under an enforceable contract with us to do that. As soon as we learned they didn't pick up the trash, we were on the phone calling them, saying, "Hey, do your job. What's the deal? Get over there. I understand there's missed pickups, but get back on it. What is it?" No response. They're not here in town. So the trash began to build up. So, LRS South willfully and recklessly retaliated. They breached their contract with us. So, they missed pickups at our properties, and this is detailed in a federal lawsuit, which we filed on December 31st, which you all should have a copy of. I gave it to the city attorney. Have you received it? Okay, all right. Well, I would like for you to read that, because that's, that's the fact. LRS did not do their job, and I am sorry, I am truly sorry that the trash became a huge issue. It was, I admit that. The claims are valid. But we didn't cause it, we corrected it immediately with transparency, with respect, and professionalism. Within a month, three weeks, we have a new vendor that is capable of handling the properties. They have taken initiative, the problem has fully abated.
Mr. Redwine, would you like more time?
If I may, if that's all right. Can I have two minutes, or is that okay?
Is there a motion to?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. A motion and a second. Councilman Dobler, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, proceed, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Second, you haven't heard much from Eucalyptus since this happened? Why? You haven't heard much from us because we were tasked with remediating a major problem, and we got on it and did our job. It's not a problem anymore. There is new dumpsters, they are picked up two and three times a week. There's no more trash problem here. And like I said, we didn't cause it, but we corrected it. We also see ourselves as a partner with the city, with this governing body. We want to be a part of this community, and we are. I think there needs to be some understanding of what we do as a company to benefit Topeka. Do you know, last year, 2024 alone, we paid over $2.4 million in property taxes, one year. I bet all of us in this room have not paid $2.4 million in property taxes. So, we see ourselves as a member of the community and expect that we will continue to be that way, because we want the best for Topeka. We have a huge investment here, we want it to go forward, we want the best for our residents, we want happy residents. Finally, I just want to comment on one last thing. Mr. McGinnis looks for workforce housing. His goal is that everyone, regardless of their station, low, middle, high, should have a safe and affordable place to live. Okay? They are, each of our properties has 24-hour security, they have onsite work order that are processed daily. I know you heard those two ladies, and I'm sure they're, what they're saying is true. But some things happen, and it takes, sometimes it takes more time.
I'm sorry, sir. You've given an extension.
All right.
Thank you for your comments.
I appreciate your time.
Christine Watkins? Christine Watkins? Peggy Marie Howe? Peggy Marie Howe? She wasn't here the first time, why am I saying that again? Carissa Y?
Hello? I'm here this evening to beg and plead that something be taken care of for the residents that have to live in the Eucalyptus properties, one of these five, 35 properties that he owns. Not only are Lou's actions and practices unethical and negligent, they are illegal regarding to habitable living, privacy, and maintenance. Last year, when pest control came, they give us 24-hour notice, they put those on our doors. They did not come because it turns out they went to the building next door, and residents had pest control come in without their knowledge. And one woman told me that she walked in to a man in her apartment, and it scared her, terrified her, she moved up soon after. I have, we've written several times to Crown Points, Complaint Authority, Code Compliance, and Topeka Housing Authority. For three years, me and my dad, who live there together in different buildings, have never received positive responses, has never gotten our maintenance taken care of. Last year, I also fell because there was no snow removal, and around the trash bands, it's just pure ice. I fell and injured my knee permanently, I have scar tissue, and I had contacted lawyers, and they had tried for eight months to contact Eucalyptus, and they said no lawyers are able to be contacted. And right now, we have tenants with disabilities, and they are unable to make it to their apartment safely or get access to their vehicles. So their vehicles have just been sitting there. I called yesterday about that to get the snow, the sidewalk shoveled for the residents with disabilities, and in general, as we deserve to have that safety. After being hung up on twice, they finally answered and told me, "Yes, we'll call somebody today." It is today now, and no snow was removed for those tenants with disabilities. Please help, because we've done everything that we can. I find it very odd that someone says they want the residents to be happy, but nothing at all has been done in any of the letters and pleas that I have been doing along with my dad in the past three years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Major? Roland Y?
My name's Roland Y, and I live at Park South Apartments for 27 years now. And I got to agree with the ladies that this is the worst it's ever been, deplorable conditions. I have handicapped people living next door to me, handicap signs up, the sidewalks have never been shoveled for snow, no salt put down. I only see how they can get to their cars, because I can't get to mine. But what I need to ask first, before I go any further, is Southwest Park South Court considered a city street? And number two, is Crown Point Apartments exempt from code compliance? Because then I can go on without, I won't want to go without the facts if I'm not right.
I would go ahead and proceed, sir, and city attorney's office will make the clarification for you.
Before my time's up. Since I've written letters to the management, even the complaint department at Crown Point, made a copy to Housing Credit Counseling, they never called me back, never said anything. I happened to call Councilwoman Miss Hiller, because I know her was associated with them. She told me to call again and leave a message, have them call me. Once again, nothing, no call back from them. And I have the city code compliance. I had asked them about the big drop-off on the side of the sidewalk, and about a smoke-along, not working, and they told me that they would have somebody come around and check. Again, no call back, nobody came around that I know of, no compliance. So, I was wondering, what does the city have to do with these people? That apartment complex is really in bad shape, if you ask me, for people living there. And I just want to know, does the city have any responsibility for taking some action against them? And I could see where it may be a contract dispute or something between the trash collectors and the trash payees, but that's got nothing to do with the people living there. It has to live with it. And like I said, from the police department all these years, I've known to get the facts and document. Well, I've got documentation from everything that I've written. I even sent photos of this to my councilmen, Mr. Hill there, and I'm just stuck. What do we have to do? That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I didn't make copies for everybody here, but I got some for my councilmen, if he needs to see them.
Forward them to everyone else.
All right.
Mr. Y? You know how to get ahold of me. Okay, that's the last person who has signed up to speak. Like I said, typically, we don't get into a back and forth during this portion, and I won't go beyond that. I do want to acknowledge that this governing body does not have deaf ears to the complaints that we have heard and are ready to act on our responsibilities as expected. So, I just want the general public to know that as they spoke here today. We'll move on now to Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure the exact verbiage I'm supposed to use to request, to see if we can, if we're able to have an executive session to discuss.
Typically, if we were going to do that, you'd have to do it in advance, so we could talk about it at another council meeting.
Okay. Well, I, all right, we'll have to, is this my way to, at our next meeting? We need to have a discussion.
I'll get with you, Councilman Miller, and we'll work through the request.
Thank you.
The city manager sets the agenda, so go ahead and get on with it. Okay? Okay. We'll move on now to announcements. Madam Perk?
On the January 21st agenda, we will have action items. We have no presentations or proclamations. So we have action items, we have a public hearing and ordinance for a vacation that is located on Bowery Street. We have an ordinance for Paradise Providence Place, revision number two, it's a PUD, and that is located at 2401 Southeast 11th Street. We have an ordinance for Marion Development Group rezoning that is located at 210 Southeast 37th Street. We have a funding agreement and a resolution, so we'll set the public hearing date and a funding agreement for the Sherwood Village Park RHID. We will have another funding agreement and a resolution setting a public hearing date for the Union at Tower District RHID, and then we will have the election of the Joint Economic Development Organization board members, and then an ordinance authorizing the signing of certain contracts. And then we'll have one discussion for camping, on camping prohibitions, and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to, wanted to address our snow removal operations briefly. I know that last week was a historic event, and number one, I want to commend all the various teams. I know that we have been focusing on the operators who worked, who worked, what, eight, I think, eight days straight on 24-hour operations, 12-hour shifts. But I also want to acknowledge our fleet folks who also stepped in and helped with those operations, as well as some of our folks from our utilities, as well as folks from, and I'm missing another team, but I just want to acknowledge the heavy lift that all of our teams made to address this. I do, I do want to, I guess, speak to a couple items, and I did share with the governing body that we will have a full debrief on February 4th on the event. But a couple questions that have come in for the sidewalks, as far as who's responsible for removing the snow in the public right-of-way, it's the adjacent property owners. And I know that there has been some questions about whether or not we're going to cite folks who may not get to that removal. No, we do not have any intentions of doing that immediately. We wanted to educate, leave door knockers, things of that nature, in the event that the snow is still on the sidewalks. As far as alleys, there's also been a question on alleys, as far as who's responsible for removing that. We have been taking those as they have come in on a case-by-case basis. Primarily, we're focusing on those alleys, if they are brought to our attention, where folks have rear entry to the garage, the alley, or trash pickup. So, to all the constituents, to everybody out there, if you have challenges with the snow in the alleys for those items, or for those reasons, or others, please contact. They can either enter a See Click Fix service request, or contact our customer service line at 785-368-3111. And again, Mr. Mayor, and to the governing body, we will have a full debrief on everything February 4th. But if you have any questions or stuff, please let me know. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move on to our governing body members. Councilwoman Hofer?
Okay, I have two things tonight. First one, I will add on to what the city manager said. I had a chance to run down to the street department, and I talked to the staff there, and there's two women in particular that answered a lot of the phone calls to get people signed up, to explain what was going on. I know that the people at 311 also did the same, but I was very impressed. It was Crystal Brown and Tina Rodriguez, and they had two hours last Tuesday where they had over 300 calls come in, which is one of the reasons why the mailbox filled up, and a lot of people were repeat calling them. So, thank you to them. They worked very hard all week and into this week, so I just, I feel like some of our employees should be acknowledged by name that they really have worked hard. On a different note, this Friday is the opening of a new On a different note, this Friday is the opening of a new, I guess you called exhibition at the Discovery Center. Thomas the Tank Engine is starting. The, I believe it opens at 9:00 AM Friday, which is the 17th of January, and it runs for a couple of months. So anybody who's a fan, and my niece and nephew were when they were kids, please go out and check out the new exhibit. And you can also see the addition as it's starting to come along, and that'll be a, a big enhancement to that facility. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a couple of things. First, thanks to the McGinnis tenants that have come. We have, many of us have heard from you, either in general or specifically. If you think that, and you, you touched on who you talk to, if you think that we don't have our full story, please get hold of our council assistance office tomorrow at 368-3710 and, and fill them in. We, we want to know that. I appreciate hearing where you got some help. As, as people talked about the issues, we want to make sure Councilwoman Valdivia-Ackel and I are co-leading to changing our cultural property maintenance, to work on affirmatively going after all situations, not just yours, and figuring out how to sew up the safety net if there are some holes that, that somehow situations or others are falling through. A couple of folks mentioned things that aren't covered on our property maintenance code, but they are covered elsewhere, like shoveling walks or sidewalks that are damaged. Hopefully, we, if somehow we failed to make sure you got connected with the right place, that we do that in, in the future and do better with our, our staff navigators. We know it's an issue, and so your stories help and your efforts help, so thank you. In terms of the, the snow, I wanted to, I'll start by thanking the city manager for apologizing for messaging. I know, it sounds like it was inadvertent, but it really was concerning to citizens to have an announcement that we bladed every street and every residential street in town. It was confusing and upsetting. And we don't have this happen very often, but, but reaching out to, to correct and the story is much appreciated. I too want to thank the crews, whether that was the people on the front line, our contractors on the front line, as well as the folks answering the phone and covering everything else that had to do with the city. This is, for most of us, a once-in-a-lifetime event. We knew it was coming, but we still weren't used to handling it. And so I really do appreciate that. A particular observation I made that throughout this, as, as trying as it was, was really kind of overwhelming to me, was again, and again, and again, particularly on social media, which is most of, what most of us were looking at during that time, because we were at home, not getting out, the tremendous helpfulness of individuals, neighbors, and strangers for one another, getting, digging out car after car, pickup truck, mail, mail delivery truck, whatever it was. And what you saw was people getting on social media saying, hey, I can help. I'm out in such and such an area, let me know if you need me. People were straightforward about whether they were happy to volunteer, or whether they needed a little money. And at the same time, people got on and, and if they needed help, they said so. And they, they too were straightforward about whether they had any money or whether they didn't. And what you saw after that was again, and again, and again, people thanking strangers or people that they knew for, you know, shoveling a whole block, digging out the cars, helping on the intersection, whatever it was. And I just, it really was heartwarming to me in many, many ways to see Topeka stepping up the way, the way people did, because that really is who we are. And it was a crisis, and people did what they could. Most immediately, this weekend is the Martin Luther King holiday weekend, and lots of recognitions are going on. Certainly look for Living the Dream banquets, look for various other recognitions to, to participate in. Thanks to everyone who's doing those events. And with that, thank you.
Councilwoman Christina Valdivia-Ackel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all the people that came in from the Eucalyptus residents that came and spoke up. For five years, I mean, right when I first took office, we were hearing about all of this. And you need to understand that if you have folks with disabilities, and they are not, you know, getting their basic needs met through like a reasonable accommodation, you all need to, you may want to consider calling the Disability Rights Advocate Office, Disability Rights Advocate Office, Rocky Nichols, and tell him about the situations that are happening at Eucalyptus with the disabled folks. And I, I don't know, I know that they, you know, do lawsuits, I know they do education, I know that they do intervention, but really, with the, with these allegations, and I believe you, you know, of, of disabled folks not being able to get where they need to go because of, you know, these terrible conditions, that is who you need to call. You also need to understand that we have a strengthened retaliatory eviction ordinance, we have a strengthened LLC ordinance, which on any kind of slumlord across this city, it is to become more aggressive on our end, collecting on them. And I want to know also, I'm asking the city attorney, how much does Eucalyptus owe in any back taxes? Or any, I would like to know that. And also, I would like to know, you know, the costs that the fines that have been weighed, weighed against him and, or Eucalyptus and any of his entities, and what that amount is. Because we have poor folks coming into court, and, you know, they're expected to pay what they do not have, but on entities that are considered bad actors in our town, who own a lot of property. Over the years, historically, they have been allowed to get by. I would say that has not happened on this council, because this is a relatively new council, as far as trying to keep track of what our housing stock looks like. But we know we have a lot of bad actors in this city. And we know how much people are suffering with the mold, with the feces that is coming up from the stools, in the tubs, with basic human rights not even being taken into account, but yet somebody can moan and groan about somebody dropped them from the trash service, and it wasn't you guys. So I just want to say that, you know, if you know other people, you need to be having them call their councilperson. You can find your councilperson through calling the city council office, and they will tell you who your city council rep is. And you need to be calling so we can start gathering more cases. So that's it. Thanks.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was glad that the gentleman came up, and he apologized to the residents of Lou McGinnis. But apology is just not enough. Several months ago, one of his properties in my district had trash out there. We went through the same thing, trash outside, it was terrible. So this is a continuing thing that needs to be stopped. To the residents, I too want to thank you. We can't do anything for you unless you tell us. Mr. Y, I will be, I will be calling you this evening to get your address. I've been trying to get these free smoke detectors out for years, so you'll have one, and anybody else that wants one. Because you shouldn't have to live in a bad condition, but I don't want you to burn up as well either, so we're gonna, we're gonna get you, we're gonna get that to any of you guys. Call your council rep, call co-compliance. Don't be scared to, to let them get in your apartments. We can't do that for you. I had several calls today on his properties, and I said the same thing to them. They're like, what should I do? What can I do? You know, I heard somebody say, shame on you to the city council. We hear you, we hear you, and we're trying to move forward, but there's so much that we can do. If, if you can tell us, but we don't know about these incidents until you come forth and you show us and you tell us, that's the most important thing. So to say shame on you, we can then put some stuff into action. So if you don't understand, just like you call the clerk's office, call the city council office and ask them, what is co-compliance? Who can I have them? They have to have permission to come in your residence. We just can't allow that to happen. And we, we want you to be safe. We want you to be as safe as, as proper, as, as, as possible. So it, it really hurts my heart to hear that, because we're trying to do all that we can do for you, but you have to work with us. I do know that we have Carrie, and maybe we can get them in, in touch with Carrie, who could maybe find you another place to stay. I don't, I don't know. But that, that might be another option. But I've been on the phone for hours, listening to the complaints, even today, even today. So we are listening, and we're trying to do the best that we can. On the snow removal, I, you know, I just want to tell residents, thank you for being patient. Thanks for those that weren't impatient. I think every email I'm, I'm starting to send to Braxton and Tony, I think is just an automatic, so if you get something that's not yours, just feel free to tell me, because I'm just going so much on, on those calls as well. It, it was kind of crazy. I'm glad to be snowed in, but there's other residents that don't. And to the people that say, yeah, all the council members, they had their streets clear, that's not true. That is not true at all, and I'm here to tell you that. That is not true. I had one little pathway, if you don't believe me, David down there took me home last Tuesday, and I think he got scared. I don't know if it's because he was on the east side, or if he got scared with the path that he had to travel, I don't know. That's one incident. Another incident is Mr. Banks, I was talking to him, and they hadn't even touched his street. And he was said, I'm just gonna patiently wait, but I did turn it in, because, you know, I see, I see everybody out there, boy, I bet there's, like, they, they said the mayor's street was clear. Well, he's on a major Ontario. I mean, you know, he, his should be clear, but anyway. And last but not least, you know, I heard the city manager give credit to all the team, which I too give credit to all the team, whatever part you played. But he actually got out there and got in one of those trucks Saturday, and one skating around, and, and some of the complaints that were turned in. So city manager, that's awesome, that, you know, your boots on the ground, you're not afraid to get up in those trucks. And if you've never experienced, guys, I tell you, my cousin worked for the street department, I miss him dearly, he passed away, and I got up in the trucks one Saturday with him, and I, it's, it's scary out there. It's scary with the people, it's scary that the people don't move for you, the trucks, they, they just think you're just, you know, it's scary. But if you ever get a chance to do that, get up in those big trucks. It's a lot of fun. Again, a thank you to the team, and welcome 2025, and we got another round of snow coming. This weekend.
Good.
You done.
Thank you. Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I saw an all-time low for our city, for our constituents to come here and beg us to do something about conditions in which they have to live. You know, I've been in some of those apartments, and they're not exaggerating, I'm sure there are other people on this council that had an opportunity to go in and see some of the, I don't even know what you call it anymore, but to have our community begging us to do something about these conditions, to me, it's an all-time low for us to allow, to allow a bad actor like that to concentrate on trash when people are living in, in a life, life-threatening situation. Can't even imagine. And I grew up in Chicago, where the rats were as big as dogs, or at least big cats. Never saw anything like that. And our concern is the trash. It's an all-time low. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor K.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you for the snow workers. I used to do it professionally, it's, it's a very grueling job, especially if you're out there at nighttime, and it's snowing. It just can get hypnotizing and draining mentally. City workers, the private people that are out there doing it, and the people that took care of their own neighborhoods, took care of their neighbors. I know every sometime, the plow came by my house, I was going out and hitting my neighbors' driveways so that the pileups didn't get too, too big. I know other people are doing that in around, certain neighborhoods around town, and I thank you for taking care of your neighbors. As Councilwoman Ortiz stated, you know, we said, oh, I bet your street's taken care of. I, I had the city manager and the streets director come out and take a look at mine, when I felt that, hey, we're getting told this one thing, and my street's another thing, and they came out and took a look. And, you know, this comes from someone, like I said, that has done it professionally, and I didn't feel like it was taken care of, and, and they were nice enough to come out and take a look. As people, you know, as everyone says, just stay off of social media, don't look at social media. The worst part about it is how people are attacking sometimes our, our city employees who are out there working this, coming home, and they might just want to hop on Facebook and relax for a few minutes, and they see they're getting bashed, and they just did 12 hours out in the cold, and then the snow. So please make sure you're thinking of how you comment. Bash me all you want, I'm, I'm a, I'm a target. Come after me, say that I'm not doing my job, or things like, please don't go after the city workers and say that they're doing a bad job, because they're out there busting their butts. I want to say thank you to the renters that came out, and the ones that have contacted me over the last couple of weeks. I have a small apology to Mr. McGinnis, because last time I spoke, I put the blame 100% on him. And it's also on the trash company, and they both failed, the renters, and that's the people that we need to be worried about. Speaking to someone from Eucalyptus, you know, everyone says, says, Mr. McGinnis is always in Oklahoma City, he's never here. What got me was, he said, oh, Mr. McGinnis has a house here in Topeka, and it used the words elegant or eloquent, I can't remember, of his property that he lives in. So I thought that was very telling of the conversation that we were having. I know a lot of us are trying to do what we can to help you. My biggest fear is going too far, to the point of harming the renters, by having a building condemned or having the person kicked out. I know a few of us have kicked around a few ideas on how to address the issue, and I've mentioned to a few renters, that once, the plan was for Sunday to go out and do, do some of this ad stuff, but as you saw, we had the blizzard, so hopefully this next weekend, I can get to it. Speaking of the blizzard, next couple of days is going to be very warm. We're going to have a lot of melting, which is going to create ice when it turns around and freezes back, I think, on Saturday or Sunday. If there is dangerous intersections, dangerous roads that are just completely iced over, please call, go on See Click Fix, we need to know about it, so this way we can get it addressed, because it will be an issue when it turns back to freezing again, after we have two days in the 40s. We're going to have a lot of melting, and then turn around and, you know. And finally, as being elected the deputy mayor, I thank my colleagues for voting for me. It's something that I'm very proud of, to be able to serve this position. I've sat down, already talked with the mayor about what he expects from me. We're going to have another meeting here shortly, again, about going over some things. Only bad thing is I've already had to correct my wife and not call me deputy mayor already, so. But again, thank you to the city workers, plows, the office people, and thank you to the city manager for kind of taking it on the chin on this one, and, you know, it's a learning experience, and I think we're all going to learn, because this was the third, third-most snowfall we've had on record. So it's something that we're not used to, and we learned from this experience, and we're going to move forward from this experience. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and keep this one extremely short, along with Councilperson Hiller and others. The team worked hard. We have a lot of staff members out here, working 12 to 14-hour shifts, seven days a week, like, like everybody has talked about. And I don't know if anyone's actually done work like that, that consistent for a week. It's hard. Not just physically, it's hard mentally. When I can't see my family, but I am working hard to go and take care of your homes, to make sure that you can get to work. to make sure that you can get to work, some appreciation is necessary from us as citizens. We hear a lot about, "I pay taxes, I expect this, X, Y, Z." We all pay taxes. We all expect it. So for us to only pit it on the city and not understand that nobody wanted or made the snow happen, but we have to deal with it the best that we can. Our, our budgets are setting a way for us to be able to handle a certain amount of snow every single year. And if I'm wrong in stating that, staff can come up and correct me immediately on that. My understanding is that's what it is. So if we have citizens who, understanding and continue to say we respect and appreciate that you're working hard, but, but then negate everything they just said that they appreciate and understand from us with talking about incompetence from something that we are trying to work through our own self. It's, um, it's not necessarily fair, but that's not what this world is, we're not fair world. I truly believe that, along with my wife, who I appreciate, want to say shout out to her and the kids for going out and getting people's driveways and walkways and the street, nobody yelled at me more than my wife did. None. So people on Facebook, people on emails, whatever the case may be, nobody got at me worse than my wife did. I completely hear you and understand the situation that we are in, but we have to have some compassion and empathy for the people who are dealing with what we had to go through. I will say, something that was brought up, moving forward, an opportunity, city manager and the staff. I think Wichita does something about GPS trackers on there, so I'm sure we've had a conversation about that. If that's a simple fix that we can do so that the citizens can be more engaged in the process, so they're not worried about our updates, they can see what's happening in real time. I think that's something if we switch to, we may not have the issues like we did. Maybe, maybe not. But if that's what they're asking for and they're suggesting, if it's not an expense that, it's out of this world for us, I think it's something we should look at. But besides that, yes, like, we got another storm coming, so prepare for that. And have some patience. Thank you very much.
Councilman Dobler.
You know, I'd love to talk for about 20 minutes here, but I don't think I will. I think it's, it's been said. I'll just second what I've heard. A lot of thanks to our street crews, a lot of thanks to Public Works Director Braxton, the responsiveness from the city manager. Every single email and call that I passed on, and there was a lot of them, I got a response back almost immediately. And as soon as the city crews could get to those areas, they did. And frankly, I got a lot of calls and emails back that said, "Thank you." I think people just want to be heard. They just want to know that things are happening. I know there's going to be a lot of after-action, and there's going to be some looks at, at, you know, the information that was put out, and there's things that could be done better. But as somebody pointed out, it was 100 years ago when we got the last snow this big. And it's, it's, uh, it's amazing that we did as well as we did with the resources we had. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan.
So Mayor, I gotta be honest, my fuse was a little lit tonight during public comment. And I've been sitting here trying to dampen it a little, and I'm not sure I've been 100% successful. So, so, I know, I tried that. So I guess the good news is, I said a couple of weeks, I sat here and said a couple of weeks ago, "I'm right here, I would love for someone from Eucalyptus to call me if they really want to tell us we're wrong and show me that we're wrong. Here I am, I'm easy to find, haven't heard from anybody." And tonight, someone came. And so they tell us they have the ear of Mr. McGinnis, and they work right with him. So this is the message I want Mr. McGinnis to hear. You're not our partner. Our partners take care of people. I have been in your properties, I have seen it firsthand. I've got emails from people who live in those properties, and they send documented receipts. We have code compliance complaints that have been through the court system that show us a repeated pattern of problems. You can tell us the sky is purple all you want, but we know better. To sit here and say that you've dealt with a trash problem while think trash piled up for three weeks is not an accurate statement. Dealing with problems on property you own means hiring trucks, loading those trucks up until you get the problem resolved, and taking that stuff to the dump so that the people who pay rent and live in your places don't have to live around it. That's the responsibility you take on as a landlord and a property owner, regardless of who you are. I get that you paid $2.5 million in property taxes. Great, you paid your fair share. That doesn't give you a pass. And so again, if I'm wrong, I'm right here, I'm easy to find. Come have the conversation with me, show me where we're wrong. I'm fine with that. But to date, everything I've seen says otherwise. And so it's very frustrating tonight to sort of be told that, which we have seen the opposite of historically the last several years from that company. All right, it's a little less lit, Mayor. I will address the snow removal thing. I have a feeling at some point, maybe by Thursday afternoon, Friday morning, the city manager was probably Googling, "How do you impeach a Topeka city councilman?" I lit his phone up multiple times, and I get it, it's fine. We're not going to, I may rehash anything that's already been said. I guess I'm, I am only going to say this in part to let my constituents know who asked it. I'm expressing their concern, but also give the city manager a little credit here. Clearly, and he has apologized and expressed that you can't tell people, and I understand, when we say we've had a plow down every street, people hear we plowed every street because that's what we said, whether we meant it or not. Right. But it doesn't matter if we were incorrect, we said it. And we have to own that, and fix that in the future. And so citizens, I think, know from, most of us on this council and feedback we got that that was not the way we wished things had been handled. And I know the city manager understands that. But I guess what I also want then the citizens to understand is, in those conversations with the city manager, he has acknowledged that, not just publicly, but privately, walked through his processes and is starting to on how that piece can change with him, the communications team, the Public Works Department. And so I do want citizens to know that you were heard, and it has been acknowledged not just by the council, but by the folks who, who were doing that. And so we appreciate that effort. And so you can't impeach me, I'm sorry, I Googled it too, just to make sure, so. Last thing I'll say is, I know that our government review committee has met. And I guess my only question, I had a question, is are they going to meet? But I guess my question is, people are asking if we're posting those meetings or where people can find that information. And so I wanted to ask that question, see if we had any of that.
Correct, then.
So the, the review committee was canceled due to, due to the weather last week. Yep, so then it's rescheduled, I believe, January 23rd? Nope, 20, what day? 29th, it's rescheduled on the 29th. So, and we posted on the public meeting website, on the city's website, so just like we do with the other meeting.
Additionally, just like any other public meeting, you can call the clerk's office to ask to be notified of the public meeting, and then you would get an email notification anytime a meeting is scheduled.
Okay. Thank you, that was it, Mayor.
And you dampened it.
That was the dampened version, so.
You know, I'm not going to go over all the comments that have already been expressed because I think they're accurate and on point. The thing that really strikes me was the comments from Councilman Banks. When he put it in the terms that, I guess you felt so much empathy for the people who had to show up here, felt that they had to show up and ask us to do our job. That's their right to do that. I appreciate that they feel that they can come in here and ask us to do that. And I think just by your comments, I think you've shown, to not just to the people who are in this room, but who are watching us, that there is a, a strong, strong bond in this governing body to acknowledge the conditions that exist on some of the properties owned by this corporation. To imply, though, that we are allowing it is, I think, a little inaccurate. I think, to be more accurate, we're taking action on the information that we have received and will continue to do that. I think maybe I'd be less, I'd be more impressed by a representative coming, and no offense to all lawyers, who wasn't a lawyer. Because for me, that sends a different message. And agreed that the focus was on the trash. That's not where the focus should be. It's the overall conditions that exist in these properties across the city. And we're not the only city suffering from that approach to how you provide a clean and safe environment. But this city won't compare itself to others in that we will take the necessary action that we feel is impactful to our citizens, to make their lives better. So know that, and I spoke to my good friend, Mr. Y. He knows where to find me, but you all know where to find every last one of us. Especially with Duncan, he's out at Fairlawn Plaza every last Wednesday, I think it is. So, so, so we're accessible. We're not some entity that you cannot feel comfortable that you can call. And the city manager has really proven that that is at the top of his list of admirable characteristics. You're, you're boots on the ground, and you go out there and, I know you and I talked about how you even drove to a gentleman's location to see for yourself, and the citizens came out and thanked you for doing that. That's not common. But in Topeka, I think it really shows our intent, and not just intent, but actions that are taken to respond to our citizens. So again, the other thing that I noticed, that took note of, was Councilwoman Heller's comment. With regards to all the praise, deserved praise for our working crews, praise needs to go to our citizens who went about their business to help others and continue to help where they could because that shows a, a community that is resilient and will pull themselves out of whatever is expected or unexpected. So my hat's off to them for that. I hope that the dialogue continues in everything that we could take under consideration as a governing body. Your voices are the voices we rely upon. So thank you for attending tonight's meeting and bringing your comments to us. There is a need for one executive session. If the city attorney would read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 40 minutes to give legal advice on a potential zoning issue, as well as an open, or a records question that is deemed privileged, as well as an additional topic that is deemed privileged under the Attorney-and-Client Privilege Act, as loud under KSA 754319B2. The open meeting will resume in the governing body chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation. City Attorney Stanley and other staff members necessary.
Okay, you've heard the need for an executive session. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
Move to approve, sir.
Motion to approve by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Banks. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, we will recess, give ourselves a quick, quick five minutes again because we don't, we want to get back into executive session as quickly as we can. Five minutes. Forty minutes. If we can talk through it and get through it quicker, all the better. Finished our discussions in the executive session. No action has been taken. There being no further business comes before this body. The meeting is adjourned.